Call the West Jordan City Council meeting to order tonight. Tonight Mayor Writing and Councilmember McConaughey will be participating electronically. Therefore, I'll be chairing the meeting as Mayor Pro Tem. All other council members are present. And we will begin tonight with the Pledge of Allegiance that will be led by Representative Ken Ivory.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, council members and guests. Would you please rise and join me in honoring our republic with the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Representative Ivory. And I'm going to ask our council members here on the dais if, when you're speaking, just so we, our council members that are participating electronically will be able to hear us, that we speak into our microphones this evening. So, let me find my... Okay, we have some presentations tonight. So, the first presentation is the West Jordan Exchange Club, recognition of the city of West Jordan police officer firefighter and crossing guard, Councilmember Lamb and McConaughey.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. At this time, I'd like to invite the Exchange Club to come forward with a presentation.
Good evening. I'm Gwen Knight, President of the West Jordan Exchange Club, and we certainly appreciate you allowing us a few minutes of your time this evening. The West Jordan Exchange Club is an affiliate of the National Exchange Club, one of the oldest service clubs in the United States. And as a club, we focus on the values of family, community, and country. For the past several years, we've had the privilege of honoring an outstanding crossing guard, police officer, and firefighter who work for the city of West Jordan, and that's the purpose of our presence here this evening. So, I would like to call forward the awardees, one at a time now, and read to you their nominations. So, first, we would like to honor the Crossing Guard of the Year, Sandra Hensley. Okay, yes, if you'd please come. And then, anyone who's here from the particular organizations that these wonderful individuals represent may come forward with them to congratulate them. I want to tell you a little bit about Sandra. She was nominated by Cindy Jacobson. Sandra is a quiet person and goes about doing her job faithfully each day. As her supervisor, I know I can always depend on Sandra to be at her post with a smile and have a good day for her crossing kids. I have had many opportunities to work with Sandra, and you can see that she is a constant positive influence to the children and grownups at her post. On August 17th of this year, Sandra has served the community for 25 years as a crossing guard, and she's very deserving of this award. Sandra, at this time, we'd like to present you with a plaque. And thank you so much for your service. Make sure all of these individuals are honored. Okay, great. Reed's our resident photographer, so we appreciate him. Thank you. Thank you, yes. Next, we would like our Police Officer of the Year Detective Ben Sullivan to come forward, along with Interim Chief Davis, if he's here, and any other members of the Police Department. Great, thanks. It's nice to meet you. I'd like to read his nomination to you. So impressed when I read it. Detective Sullivan was transferred from patrol to the Street Crimes Unit in the fall of 2017. Since that time, he has been instrumental in impacting crime that directly affects residents and businesses in West Jordan. One case that illustrates this involved a home invasion robbery that occurred in October, where the suspects robbed and assaulted a victim. Officer Sullivan quickly identified the involved parties, and utilizing a variety of investigative techniques, learned that the suspects were involved in a large organized gang of criminals that were involved in robberies, fraud, manufacturing counterfeit credit cards, dealing in stolen firearms, and stolen vehicles. Over the course of several months, Detective Sullivan and members of the West Jordan Police Street Crimes Unit identified 24 suspects operating in West Jordan, served multiple search warrants, recovered numerous stolen firearms and vehicles, and seized a credit card embosser and hundreds of counterfeit American Express cards. This ongoing investigation resulted in dozens of arrests and the filing of 53 felony charges on the group. As Detective Sullivan has continued to work with victims and other agencies, they have identified 86 fraudulent American Express accounts in 15 different states. The information developed has contributed to ongoing cases being worked by the FBI and DEA, resulted in the arrest of two shooting suspects from a UPD case, and most recently resulted in the U.S. Attorney's Office filing federal charges on members of this criminal organization. Officer Sullivan did an outstanding job of identifying and dismantling an organized criminal enterprise that was operating in West Jordan City and that has ties to similar organizations in multiple states that are now also facing prosecution due to the tenaciousness of Detective Sullivan in his law enforcement efforts. As such, I feel he deserves to be recognized for his tremendous effort in this endeavor, and I know I sleep a lot better because of Detective Sullivan. Thank you. Thank you so much. Next, I would like to call forward Captain Chris Maxfield, our firefighter of the year, and his nomination was submitted by Battalion Chief Steve Holmes. It is my pleasure to nominate Captain Chris Maxfield for the West Jordan Exchange Club Firefighter of the Year Award. I have worked with Chris since he began his career with West Jordan in 1999. During that time, he has demonstrated an outstanding work ethic and unwavering positive attitude toward both fellow firefighters, administration, and the citizens in our community. Called upon many times to go well beyond normal assignments, Chris has participated in a variety of duties that assist the department in fulfilling our mission to the public. The following is only a partial list of his accomplishments. Aided in the development of our heavy rescue program, serving as member, instructor, and chair. Valley-wide trained the trainer instructor for technical vehicle extrication. Dual-trained in both heavy rescue and hazardous material technician. As department training officer, he researched and implemented a new training program in order to record and track the many hours needed to maintain fire and medical certifications. Part of his duties is to oversee the recruit training program, thus ensuring West Jordan has the most competent and prepared firefighters in the state. Utah Valley Fire and Rescue Academy instructor. Chris has a bachelor's degree from Utah Valley University and is in the process of obtaining his master's degree from Southern Utah University. Chris's efforts, energy, and expertise have increased our department's overall capabilities, exemplifying a selflessness and a caring image that the public associates with members of the fire service. His accomplishments set the standard among firefighters because he is a highly valued member of the department and is certainly a strong candidate for the consideration of the West Jordan Exchange Club Firefighter of the Year Award. Congratulations, Chris, a well-deserved award. We again congratulate these wonderful individuals and thank you, council, for time on your agenda and pledge our continued service to the community of West Jordan. Oh, of course, that's crazy. Okay, so it's, oh, so it's Lieutenant, Sergeant, or Detective Ben Sullivan, his wife? So Detective Sullivan's wife was just a little late, so we were wondering if she'd like to come up with a detective and take a picture.
We'll go down and get another photograph. Just want to thank our Exchange Club for their efforts on that, recognizing some of our staff. We'll now have a presentation regarding the city's Community Preservation Department and the city's Administrative Code Enforcement Program, and that'll be by Brock Hudson.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem and council. Please.
Red light's a dead giveaway. I wanted to try to explain that we'll use this presentation time period to hopefully gain a little bit of insight on ordinances and decisions that you'll be having to make in the future. Think of it as an explanation of a work session in the form of a 10-minute presentation.
Okay. Thank you, David. Brock?
Thank you. If you remember, we created the Community Preservation Department back in April. Part of that is with the Code Enforcement Department. Melanie? I know, the green one's just putting the light on. Maybe it's got to go over to Scott. Scott, hit that button. There you go. All right. As part of the Community Preservation Department, code enforcement is included in that. What we have done is provided you in your packet this evening is a amended administrative code enforcement ordinance. Included with that is the Administrative Law Judge portion, as well as a civil citation. Okay. So, the new Administrative Law Judge, currently, we have city staff that's assigned by the city manager presenting or presiding as our Administrative Law Judge. What this does is gives an experienced professional that has been offered a contract, depending on council's vote, and he's an Administrative Law Judge of the Labor Commission currently. He's a neutral, independent decision-maker that isn't a city employee or involved with the city. That takes the onus away from the staff. Mr. Clegg is currently our Administrative Law Judge right now. It gives us an extra layer of due process with the code enforcement program and the administrative side of it, and it gives an ultimate appeals right to somebody that wants to appeal a code enforcement decision or order to be able to appeal it to the Administrative Law Judge. So, the cost of that is less than $20,000 a year that can be approved by the city manager. Anything over and above would come to council for approval. So, this is a program that is comparative to nearby cities that they are utilizing at this time, as well as the funding for this Administrative Law Judge is being taken out of the abatement funds that are solely collected from fines and fees for people that have had their property addressed by code enforcement. None of this is coming out of the neighbor whose house is immaculate. They're not paying a dime of this for the Administrative Law Judge. So, it's being funded within the department and the fines and fees. We will bring this back to you. It is a 45-page document, so we'll bring it back to you in a couple of weeks for discussion and for instruction from council. Do you have any questions at this point on that?
Any members of the council have questions for Mr. Hudson?
The administrative citations will be utilized not just within code enforcement, but within stormwater and other areas that are possibly interested in using the administrative citation. This is in lieu of a notice of violation that would give somebody 14 days to correct. This is more for an immediate type of correction that needs to take place. Parking, for instance, over a sidewalk, a sightline or a sight triangle issue that needs to be addressed immediately due to public safety concerns. Stormwater, where the stormwater inspectors can go out on the SWIPs and be able to issue citations on-site. Now, within this is a copy of the citation for you to review, and on page two is the fines and fees that have been put on there for these citations. Obviously, those are part of a fee schedule the council would need to approve, so any suggestions you have on that is welcome. On the citation, we've also provided all of their legal remedies to dispute the citations or to come in and take care of the citations. And that is it for this. You have the packet that has the ordinance in it. It is a long read, so we will bring this back for further discussion, and the decision by council is a business item on the 11th.
All right, and it looks like Councilmember Burton has a question for you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. I have a couple of questions. The first one is, I know you said you can be citing the violator, not the property owner?
Correct.
And how do you identify the violator if, like, they're not there when you see the issue? How do you find it?
Within the code, if it's, for instance, a parking issue, we are working right now to get certified through BCI so my officers can run license plates and cite the owner of the vehicle, leave the citation with the vehicle. When it comes to, say, a business owner on a business license violation, there are requirements in code that we not only have to contact, but mail a copy of the citation, and if we can't actually get a hold of the owner of the business, we can cite the on-duty manager at that point.
Okay. My other question is, when I'm looking at the fee scale, the first offense, $100, second offense, 200, third, 300. I can figure the math on that. Is there, and are we going to provide, like, a warning in the event that's, we just want to let them know and use it like the police do?
The fee schedule is in no way said at this time. That's just being provided as an example. That has to come to you guys, you have to approve it before we ever get to that, so...
Okay, so if we choose we want to have a warning for the first offense or...
Absolutely.
A variable, we could do that, so we can make it a range, not just a single number.
Yeah, and this is on the agenda tonight, just as a presentation. We are bringing this back to you. We, under the rules, we're just supposed to present and then give you the information and let you absorb it, and then as we bring it back, we put it on as a business item. We'll give you the additional time that you guys need in order to hash through all of that and ask the questions that you're looking to ask and go forward from there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brock. Okay, and before we jump to telecommunications, I just want to communicate briefly with Mayor Writing and Councilmember McConaughey. We have video for Mayor Writing, and so if you just want to raise your hand, I can call on you. And Councilmember McConaughey, I don't have video for you, so you'll need to just ask... So, if you have questions, just jump in and I'll recognize you. And that last presentation is regarding telecommunications facilities, Senate Bill 189, and Scott Langford will have that presentation.
Thank you very much. Hopefully, this will work. Maybe? So, it wasn't just Brock? Okay. I guess the battery must be going low. Can you help me, Dave? Thank you. So, this has been kind of a long time coming. If you could advance to the next few slides. Next slide. So, on your agenda this evening, you'll see Item 6C, which is a proposed amendment to existing code the city has in place. Title 8, Chapter 9, has been in the books in city code for a number of years, and it served us quite well to help regulate and deal with sometimes the spaghetti noodle nature of what is actually underneath our city right-of-way. And depending on where you are in the city, it can get pretty complicated, but the franchise agreements and other direction that you currently find in Title 8, Chapter 9 has served us quite well for all utilities and similar things that are undergrounded. The proposal and the new ordinance, if you can advance, not only deals with the below-ground, but also the above-ground issues. And if you could keep going, Dave? Next one. So, why are we here? Why are we proposing this change? Well, you see that spinning wheel up there? I did that on purpose. Everybody hates to see that, right? We love our devices, we love our, especially our mobile devices, and this is basically a data-driven society. We need to have information at our hands, at fingertips, all the time, and so if you can roll to the next few... So, data, data is driving it, which is driving the changes in technology. For a long time, the big macro cell towers that you see, the 80, 100-footers, they were sufficient. They got us through. With more and more people going online and connecting, there are a lot of holes, and the throughput of connecting to the internet, just, we just need more and more. And so, the advancement of technology has gone from these big macro cells to now what they're calling the micro cells or the small cells. And because of these changes and tech advancements, the FCC has been keeping up and rolling out new regulations. Well, this past year, the legislative session, the state passed Senate Bill 189, which, in essence, I won't go into the details unless you have specific questions, but it basically said that we have to allow for these above-ground telecommunications facilities or micro cells within our right-of-way. Not on all public land, but within dedicated designated right-of-way. So, Senate Bill 189 does give some deference to the local municipalities. We can steer some of these in small fashion. We can regulate aesthetics to a point, and in some cases, placement if it deals with the safety. So, that is what you will find as Item 6C on the agenda tonight, if you can go to the next few slides. I wanted to just quickly do an overview of how this works. We've met with various companies that are involved in this industry, from Verizon to AT&amp;T, et cetera. This is a slide that was shared with us that kind of shows the intent of these small cells, how they work in concert with the big macro cells that you see. If you can go to the next few slides real quickly. It's hard to see, but they have various elements, the antenna, radios, power, the back hall. Back hall lines are what connects it to the internet, whether through its fiber, cable, et cetera. The intent and the way that the Senate Bill 189 is drafted, it does give us the ability to blend these cell sites, these micro cell sites, in with our community. And so, with that, we do have some city-adopted street lights, and the intent is to complement those as these are proposed. So, there's various examples. We don't need to go through them all, but they do offer variations and options as they are presented. We don't have a specific design because we haven't received any applications as of yet, but we expect in the coming month to receive these, these applications. And again, various things from strapping it to existing streetlights, to utility poles, to traffic control cabinets and so forth. There's a lot of options. Bottom line, we have to allow these things. We just need to carefully craft an ordinance that appropriately allows them into the fabric of our community and provides services, just like any other utility, to our residents. So, I believe, yeah, I've got one last slide. So, the steps forward, council would presumably adopt an ordinance for West Jordan. City council reviews and approves each master license agreement with each provider, and then with those master license agreements in place, we would then, as staff, review and approve the site-specific locations in the context of our local ordinance, state law, and federal law. I have Duncan Murray and David Clements with me this evening. If you have specifics, technical questions, at this time, I'll turn it back to you. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And I have a, we have a question from Councilmember Lamb.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. So, from my understanding, most cell towers are on land that the cellphone companies rent or lease to have their towers on. If I'm understanding this correctly, now all of these cellphone companies are now able to go into any city and start putting them up on any light pole as long as the... and start putting them up on any light pole as long as the city says yes. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Will they be? Will they be leasing these from us, or do they just get to put those on there for free?
I'll turn that over. That, that is regulated by Senate Bill 189, and I believe we put that in your ordinance as well. I can't remember the fees off the top of my head. Do you have those? $250 per pole?
Yeah, with a clarification that they're already subject to the Municipal Telecommunications Act. So, in this, in our state, they're, the Public Service Commission regulates the taxes. So those tax monies come back to each, each city that they operate in. So where we don't charge per pole, they're being charged a tax for the service they're providing anyway.
Okay. And do, and I don't know if this is for you or for Scott, do we choose where they want to be, or do they come to you and say, "We want these certain locations"?
They come to us, and essentially, we, we have to approve those within reason. If you dig into our ordinance, there is a provision in there that if they're located adjacent to a residential district and the right-of-way that they're trying to locate in is less than 60 feet wide, then they will need to go through a similar process to what we have in administrative conditional use. So we would notice the neighbors around there and give them a heads-up that this is coming in, and we would, through that process, look to mitigate any, any concerns as best we could. But essentially, they're coming forward, and, and so we just need to, to work with the industry to, to fold it into the fabric.
And my last question would be, and I don't know if we have the answer just yet, is let's say it's T-Mobile that comes and they're the ones that want to put it up. Well then, does AT&amp;T go and put their own up, or do they share those towers with each other?
Due to the frequencies, they cannot share, so they would have independent poles for each carrier.
So if we have four poles on a corner, we could have four different telephone companies putting poles up?
Presumably.
Just thinking out loud.
So, there is also the possibility that there are other providers that will use, will put in those facilities and then allow multiple carriers to use those facilities, is my understanding. So there is the possibility that we can combine and limit or minimize the number of, of micro cells. Also, the other process that we already have in place that would go in tandem with these individual site licenses is encroachment permits. We have one of our staff members who's full-time, deals with that issue. Part of the encroachment permit process or approval process is making sure that we're not overloading or putting too much in the way of facilities in an area that can't handle it. So, so to go back to your prior question of can somebody just willy-nilly put them anywhere? Well, no, they still have to comply with our encroachment permit process and available space.
And if I may, I want to give kudos, props to, to a lot of staff members who've spent a lot of time working on this. Specifically, this is a great example of, of the collaboration between West Jordan and other cities around the valley. We've worked with Midvale, Sandy, Draper, Salt Lake City to, to work jointly on, on an ordinance. Now, we have some individual adaptations for West Jordan that's good for our city, but this has been a very good and a very involved process up to date, so.
Thank you. All right, thank you. And I saw Mayor Writing, but also Councilmember Whitelock, so the order we'll do is a question from Councilmember Whitelock, and then we'll go to Mayor Writing.
Thank you. Scott, will we have a say over the aesthetics?
To a point, yes. The, the state legislature did give local municipalities the ability to, to regulate aesthetics to a point. I was going to pull up that language. Now, if, if we become too onerous, we are going to get pushed back, you know, to, to make anything, anything is possible.
What I really want to know is, I want to know that that it will look pleasing and that it will be uniform, that AT&amp;T doesn't have something different than Verizon. Verizon doesn't, I, I want them to all have to basically be the same, so it's not...
And we can do that.
I just think that would be more aesthetically pleasing than each carrier having their own design.
Exactly. We can certainly do that, and we'll have that continuity. In our local ordinance that we've proposed, we also carve out special parts of West Jordan that are unique. And, for example, are some of our transit stations across the street, would we develop the city center, Jordan Landing? We want to make sure that, that we don't, we aren't too jarring. We blend it into the community. So, but to your point, we can, whether it's AT&amp;T, Sprint, independent carrier, they all can be the same.
Okay, thank you. And, and I did read it, and it sounded good to me, but I just, that was the question. Thanks.
Thank you. Mayor Writing?
Uh, two questions that are somewhat related. Any carrier, how many of these micro cells would be required in West Jordan? And the other part is how far apart are these for each individual carrier?
So, Mayor, if I understood your question, you're asking about total quantity and spacing. Is that correct?
That's correct. As any, as any carrier said, we're going to have to put in X number of these in our city.
So we, we haven't had extensive discussion with the various carriers. It, it all is dependent on, on the data consumption. And in regards to the building placements, out in Jordan Landing, for example, we expect to see more than we would elsewhere because of the, the number of people there, the buildings. And, and so those, those have, that's the message that has been conveyed to us from, from the various meetings we've had with, with Verizon and AT&amp;T. There's one, one request that I'm aware of that will be coming in soon, again, probably next month. On the, one, one location is the corner of 7800 South and 3200 West. But that's, again, we don't, we have not accepted any applications for these as yet. As far as the, the spacing, that's all dependent on their, their, their engineers to see where those holes are in the city.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Mayor. I don't see I have any more questions. Thank you, Scott. Okay, next is Communications City Manager and Staff, Mr. Bricky.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. There are no comments from the staff tonight. Thank you for asking.
All right, thank you. And I'll move to council reports, and we'll, we'll start with our remote members, so we'll start with Mayor Writing. You have anything to...
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember McConaughey?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Burton?
Nothing tonight, Mayor Protem.
Councilmember Lamb?
I'm going to break that up a little bit. I do have something tonight. Last week was, I think, tough for all of us as a city council as we made a decision to raise taxes. It's never something that we want to do, but it was something that we felt was necessary last week. And as, as we went about this week, I had a lot of questions from citizens about why, and some weren't happy about it, some were. But one benefit that I've already seen from it is our crossing guards here in West Jordan. There was, I want to say a little bit of misinformation about us not having coverage in the city. All crossing guards, all crossing walks were covered, whether it be by our crossing guards or by our police force. But I, I heard, just as I came in today and I've heard, you know, throughout the week, that we've had many, many applicants that have already applied to be crossing guards, and as they will, as they are trained over the next few weeks, they will be up and running and protecting our children. So I just wanted that to get out there in the public that it's going to be a great thing for the current crossing guards that are working on our staff and for the new ones that we've already had apply in all those positions, we feel so. Thank you to the citizens of West Jordan, thank you to the city council, and thank you to our, our police force. Thank you.
Councilmember Whitelock?
Thank you. The Healthy West Jordan Group, they're, they're an amazing group, and they're planning, I'm going to get it wrong, I know, because I can't pull it up fast enough, but I think it's Fall Into Fitness or Fall Into Health. Anyway, they're planning a series of free classes that will be available. And one of them will actually be a, include a dinner, where we're getting a grant that will help provide a dinner. And information about opioid addiction. They're also doing, there, there are several of them. One will have a cooking segment, so if you're interested, look for that. There will be registration online soon, and I think it will prove to be a great event for our city.
Thank you. Councilmember Jacob?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Last week, I had the opportunity to attend the, tell me if I get this right, municipal, the Association of Municipal Councils meeting, as the alternate in place of Councilmember Burton. And the topic of discussion was auxiliary dwelling units or AUDs? ADUs? It's really quite an enlightening discussion. There's a presentation they gave there, which I'll, I have not yet received an email, but when I get it, I'll forward it to everybody. And it'll be a topic of discussion I think we're going to have to have in the near future to talk about not only the affordable housing issues that we have, but also but also just a property rights issues and things like that. I think these dwelling units really need to be considered. We need to work on ordinance for those. So watch for that coming soon, and we'll, we'll get it on a future agenda coming up.
All right, thank you. And I, I just want to mention real quick, I had the opportunity Saturday to ride with a member of our police department from 8:00 PM to 1:00 AM. And it was very enlightening, a lot of calls. We did actually go from call to call to call to call, hardly stopped. A few observations, a lot of people do not pull over when an emergency vehicle passes or is trying to pass, asking for, requesting the right-of-way. So I would hope that our residents would recognize that we're, our staff, our public safety employees are responding to an urgent need. But we, we visited pretty much every district. We had an assault that happened at a retail store in District 2. We had a residential burglary in District 4 that ended up not being won. We had a, I'm sorry, that was in District 3. District 4 had a loud noise party at 11. It ended up being underage consumption and some things like that. Our police force was very professional. They communicate very well. It was very enlightening, and I don't know if the rest of the council has had the opportunity to ride along with the police department, but I would encourage you to do so. There was one point about 10:30, 11 o'clock at night where all the officers were on a call, and there were still six calls that were pending an officer to be assigned to it. So with what Councilmember Lamb said, I think the residents expect a level of service of our public safety and the tax increase was necessary to maintain what our residents are accustomed to, and I was able to see that firsthand. So I do appreciate our police department for the efforts they made, and I'm going to do it again in a couple of months, so. I appreciate that. That's all our communications for this evening. We'll now open up for citizen comments. There are opportunities this evening for citizens to speak. Since we have one public hearing, if you're here for that item, and would like to address that during the public hearing, you'll have the opportunity to speak at a later point in the meeting. If you're here to discuss anything else, whether it is something that is on the consent calendar, a business item, or something that is not even on the agenda, this will be your only opportunity in the meeting tonight to discuss those things. As per our policy, you'll have a three-minute time limit, and I will start with those who have signed up in advance. And all I ask is that you state your name. We don't need your contact information. And so we will start with Betty Naylor.
My name is Betty Naylor, and I currently serve as President of the Salt Lake County Fair Board of Directors. This year, we have been, we were given a challenge to take the fair for Salt Lake County back to its original roots. So there were a lot of displays, a lot of animals showing, no carnival, no paid entertainment. All the rides that we had were free and back to its roots, wagon rides and so forth. I serve under the direction of Mayor Ben McAdams and the County Council. Mayor McAdams decided this year that he was going to have a pie baking contest. Okay, Dirk, you're already smiling, aren't you? I want to personally congratulate Dirk Burton, who is my area representative here in West Jordan. He did enter it because all elected officials, according to Mayor McAdams, were invited to participate in this pie baking contest. I was proud of my representative. Councilmember Dirk Burton did bake a pie and was awarded, I believe it was the best tasting pie. We did the best we could with the fair this year. Attendance was good, everything was free, but most of all, the participation. I'm glad to serve in that capacity, and I hope that we can make the fair good, better, and best with our new challenge. I do serve in that position for one more year. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, next, next I have Lindsay Delisle and Martin Gardois.
Hello. My name is Lindsay, and this is my husband, Martin Gardois, and this is our daughter, Alexandria. I work for the Department of Veterans Affairs, and I'm also a reservist in the United States Air Force. Martin is a, works for, as a dentist in a nonprofit organization. We have put our life savings into building a dental office on the south side of 7800 South here in West Jordan, just across the street of Jordan Landing, from Jordan Landing. The project is going to be a small 3,300 square foot building with a tiny 1,200 square foot basement. We have recently demoed the old 1890 home in which the property was on and received our building permit. However, along with that came enormous amount of impact fees. Even though there was already a home there in which we owned and were 100% enhancing the appearance, safety, and security of that area, we, we were charged a grand total of $34,000 in fees, and I will go into some specifics about the impact fees. The sewer impact fee was $3,400, and we're keeping the exact same sewer line and dental, and the dental office will have less of an impact on sewer than a home would have. The water impact fee, $3,800 and plus additional $500 for a meter fee, in which we will use a dry vacuum, which doesn't use any water. We have two small bathrooms with no shower. The same water line and same meter will be used when we own the residential home. However, the amount of water will be less. The storm drain impact fee was $7,000, for, again, less of an impact, as we are building huge drain stumps in our property. And the land, because our land is too low to actually drain into the city system, so we had to plan it into our system to actually allow the storm drain on our own property. Lastly, we were charged fire, police, and road fees for our 1,200 square foot basement, so our storage basement that no employee, no, no one's supposed to go down into, we're charged those impact fees of $2,600. We're also installing a fire hydrant for the community to use in addition to installing low-impact lighting and security cameras that will assist law enforcement in their effort to deter crime. So our families here are asking for help. We are using our life savings, home equity line of credit, and an SBA loan to beautify it and contribute to this community, and we get taxed $34,000 in fees. Does this sound fair or rational to you? Please, is there anything you can do to help us reduce this financial impact on our family? We are family-owned, new startup, ground-up, small business, and every penny counts at this point. And we really would appreciate, can you help us?
Okay, thank you. We, we don't really have the dialogue, but maybe, Scott, you can get their information.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem?
Yes.
Their location is probably in your district where that's located. But I have their contact information on the card, and I'll meet with you afterwards.
Okay. Thank you. And the last one I have is Tyrone Fields. Oh, sorry, Rob.
Mayor, just for the council's information, Mr. Duncan just pointed out to me that I think Mr. Langford... Mayor, just for the council's information, Mr. Duncan just pointed out to me that I think Mr. Langford probably talked to the residents. There's an appeal provision in the city code on this very issue. And so we'll make that information available to them.
All right. Thank you. Tyrone Fields.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. City Councilmember. I'm here this evening to speak again about a concern of mine that I brought before the city council and other public official is an intersection at 7800 South, 2700 West. I had the opportunity to speak with a lieutenant today from the police department. Please forgive me, I forgot his name. Mr. Waters? Lieutenant Waters?
Thank you.
We're making some headway, but maybe a little too late. It's 18 months, almost two years after I first meet with this city council. Some of you were here, some of you wasn't. The mayor wasn't here at that particular point in time. Intern chief wasn't here at that particular point in time. Chief Diamond was sitting in that chair when I came before the city council to speak about this particular issue. We have people that's running this particular light. It is off. It is inoperable and I finally got UDOT to, I spoke with them today and spoke with Ms. Kathleen over there who has put in a work order and said that the left-hand turn signal there is inoperable. 18 months. I've been calling. 18 months. Trying to get somebody to take a look at this.
Take the bandage off.
This is my son. At the time, he was going to middle school. So we have car incidents and stuff there and I said, "Somebody kid was gonna get hurt." I stood up at this podium and told this council, told Chief Diamond sitting in this chair. Somebody kid was gonna get hurt at that intersection. Something needed to be done. And I said, "God forbid it be my child." Well, it was my child. The first day of school, he goes to high school in West Jordan. Show him your arm. A car blows through the red light. He has to dive out of the way. 18 months. We're lucky he's not in the hospital. City council is not lucky, you're lucky he's not in the hospital. Police department is lucky he's not in the hospital.
Would you, just for the record, state the intersection?
7800 South. 2700 West. Going towards West Jordan Hospital. We need to have officers out there in the morning when the kids are walking to school. We need to have officers out there when they're going home and tell them, "It's a problem." UDOT has a work ticket in, switch the light. Come out, have their engineers come out, switch the light. But that's not gonna help. I gotta go to Jordan District School System. We're gonna have to put crossing guards there. I'm gonna have to do something. We're gonna have to defend a young kid here. I have a kid for kids. I'm commissioned with the Boy Scouts of America and I don't just worry about my child, I worry about every kid that walks here. Between September 1st of 2017 to May 2018, nine incidents. I just put in another request to find out how many more accidents we've had at that intersection.
Thank, thank you very much. Okay, that is all the people who have filled out paperwork who would like to speak. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to address the council this evening? Anyone would like to? Anyone like to speak before I close it? Okay, seeing none, I will close the citizen comment and move on to the consent calendar. Okay. Let me just ask, can I reopen public comment to have our representative speak?
I would suggest suspending the rules briefly, allowing for the representative to speak, if that is the desire of the council.
I move suspension of the rules to allow Representative Ivory to speak for three minutes.
We could just do that by, we don't need a roll call, right? We can just call those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Representative Ivory.
Thank you, Mayor Protam and mayor and council members and staff. I didn't, didn't realize when to get in. You asked me to give a little report. I'm happy to do that. There's some really interesting things that have been happening legislatively since the session ended. You may have heard in the news, nationally now, the federal government has passed a bill doing a national hotline number for suicide prevention. That started right here in Utah. That started with my colleague Steve Elisten and the work of the legislature, and I want to give some kudos out to my colleague. He's done incredible work to work on suicide prevention, mental health issues. A bill that I passed this year, House Bill 308 has now gone through. It's for tele-mental health services, so some of the telecommunication things we were talking about earlier. We now have our Jordan District as one of the leading applicants for the pilot program for tele-mental health services in the K-12 system. And so we're hoping that that expands the reach, the coverage, reduces the cost of getting mental health services to students. Another, another bill that I'm really excited about, we passed a bill this year, just to give you an example on property tax, right? We have 67% of our state is federally controlled, that we're not able to collect property tax. The federal government in 1976 said, "We're gonna keep that land, but we're gonna give you a payment in lieu of taxes." And you all know when you get a day off in lieu, time in lieu, if you, if you work a day, you get a day off some, some other time. It's roughly equivalent is the definition of in lieu. Federal government said, "We're gonna give you a payment in lieu of taxes." Well, just give you an example of the magnitude. We, we collect more property tax revenue in the state of Utah on the 20% of our land that is taxable than we've received in 20 years from the federal government on the 70% of the land that's not taxable. And so this year we passed a bill and I'm happy to report it was unanimous bipartisan cosponsorship. I've never seen that in my eight years in the legislature. Unanimous bipartisan cosponsorship on a bill that said, "We're going to calculate the amount that you promised to pay." We've never done that before. And so we're gonna calculate the taxable value of the federal land that they promised to pay in lieu. Initial estimate is, is, this is a really big number. Instead of $35 million on 35 million acres, we're talking hundreds of millions to billions of dollars that go to schools and to local communities that we're being deprived of. In fact, I'll quote my dear senate colleague who was my senate sponsor of the bill, Jim Dubakis. He said, "The federal government is a deadbeat landowner. They've gotta pay their fair share." And so we're moving very rapidly. We've developed some really exciting artificial intelligence property valuation technology that, well, we shouldn't say we didn't develop it. There's some forces in Utah that have developed that, that have come forward, that are helping us with that. And so that's very exciting. You'll see that moving forward. One last quick item. We met with the Western Growth Coalition on Monday. We're You can continue. Okay, yeah, we're going to be working with, we're asking the cities to designate one designee to be involved in developing a legislative priority list for the western region. We're finding, and you know, we've kind of created a vacuum. We, there's a vacuum in the western region here that the legislature's happy to fill, the county's happy to fill. If we don't have our own plan and our own direction for what the exciting opportunities are for this region. And so mayor, I know that we've talked and I think you've kind of nominated Joel perhaps to be the designee for the, for West Jordan. And we'll get with the other cities to have the principals engaged, come up with a legislative priority list and then develop a strategy, strategy around that for the next session. And then a long-term vision planning so that we can't have them coming in and saying we've left a vacuum. And then we start working to build the ground swell. So that's in the works and happy to work with you all. And I'm excited that you're keeping the city safe and keeping commerce moving effectively. So thank you for what you're doing and appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you, Representative Ivory.
Thanks.
Okay. Thank you for that and Mayor, Mayor Writing.
Yes, I would like to see if Representative Ivory could be told about the upcoming meetings we're trying to send to our legislator. So that we can talk about those things where he just mentioned. We can establish what we're looking for and our priorities with the city. Talk to them about the things that they're working on, as we can support them as well. So with these meetings coming up and hopefully there's cases that are affected in our city. And we're hoping that they can pin. So I just wanted to pass that on to Representative Ivory, make sure that he's aware of those.
Thank you, Mayor. We'll now move to the consent items and I've been asked to pull Item L by Councilmember Lamb and Councilmember Whitelock and Item M, as in Mary, by Councilmember Burton. Councilmember Jacob.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. I move to approve consent items A through K.
Second.
All right, thank you. We have a motion on the table by Councilmember Jacob and a second by Councilmember Burton. Any discussion to the motion?
For clarification?
Yes.
That was A through G.
K. K as in kite?
A as in, K as in kite.
Thank you. Thank you.
Melanie.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Mayor Writing?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Whitelock?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamb?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Anderson?
Yes.
Vote passes seven in favor.
All right, thank you. We'll Item 7 is to discuss the items that were not, the consent calendar items that were not voted on. So we'll start with Item L as in Lamb. Councilmember Whitelock.
For, for Item L, it is a grant from Salt Lake County. And I'm really excited about this grant, but when I read through the packet, I felt like we need to update what came to us before I could feel comfortable voting it. So I'm asking that we send it back to Legal or to Justin, to whomever it needs to go to for a little bit of updating before we give the final approval, because I felt like there were a few things that needed to be tweaked.
Thank you. And may I just let the council know, we really appreciate Mayor McAdams, Ms. Yocum moving quickly to amend the original contract and send us something to work with. They wanted to know if we could continue moving forward in getting this grant approved. I will be able to report back to Ms. Yocum tomorrow that we will fine-tune it and return it to her with the changes. She wanted to get that, her request was to get it in front of the council as soon as possible for the discussion to begin. Now that the council has had a chance to look at it, we will fine-tune it, make some recommended changes and then bring it back to you before sending it back to them. Or would you like us to simply send it back to them with the changes Legal makes?
I wanna see what the changes are. So, before I say yes.
They will make the changes and then distribute it by email to every one of you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Lamb.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. So with that, does that mean this will come back on the next city council meeting? If they have the information that you need?
Okay.
Yeah, we've already gone through some of the issues. What I may do is if any of you have specifics you've seen, if you want to shoot me an email, I can address those, or if you want me to call you, just let me know and I'm happy to talk to you about it. But I think we can turn it around by next council meeting. Well, maybe. Depending on what Councilmember Whitelock has, but fundamentally, we know what's in the agreement. We know how it works and so we can talk through those.
I think, I think as it was looked at, without going into a ton of detail, it just appears that a lot of it is the original, a lot of the verbiages, the original contract was within the packet. I think just freshening it a little bit would do wonders. But we are excited to work with the county.
And then, uh,
Councilmember Lamb.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. The reason I wanted this pulled is I think maybe we haven't been able to give all the full information out to the public about what is going on with this. I wasn't on the council last year, nor did I agree to break ground for this facility last year. But I was excited for it. And as I came onto the council this year, I was excited to find out where we were at, where we were at with it. So as you know, ground was broken, a place was chosen, and now that area no longer has the fences up and you've probably noticed that the fences are down. Due to some technicalities of location and with it being in the park, we are no longer able to have the, the facility in the park where we wanted to have it last year. But I wanted the public to know that we as a council and as a city are moving forward to find the best location for that and find the best construction and cost for that as well. For those of you who don't know, the costs for this have gone to about 10 million or more, depending on if we were to start the project. It should have been started back in May, but obviously we had those complications. So I just wanted the public to know that we are moving forward on this. It is, there's a lot of things in play right now. The main, the main thing is location of where we're gonna locate it. And once we can get that down, we will let the public know where that will be. And then as far as cost goes, this is great. This $2 million from the, from the county was unexpected in my, my case. I'm not sure if it was unexpected on the rest of yours. So everyone else, feel free to chime in on this if you want to, but I'm excited for this to move forward and I do expect us in the next month or two to make some decisions that we'll be able to announce to the city moving forward on this facility, which will be great for our city. So thank you.
All right, thank you. So we're just not approving it, right? Okay. Just making sure. All right, we'll now move to Item M, which was pulled by Councilmember Burton.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. I have some questions, several, and I don't know if Mr. Clegg is the right one to answer, but I'll start with him and see if he can do that. So as I read this, it's talking about the SCADA system. Is that now in our new Public Works Building? Is it there?
The new one is not. We're just in the beginning stages of installing the new equipment. And what this is, is to, back in 2016, they approved a professional services agreement with Brown Caldwell. There were four phases of that. We're on the fourth phase now for construction oversight administration to start getting the equipment installed. The old system is in the new Public Works Building. We're starting on the new system right now, getting all the infrastructure put in.
Okay, so the old system has been moved from the old building into the new building and is it operating?
Correct, it is, yep.
Okay. So this that we're looking to approve now is step four for the new system that will go and replace the old system that we just moved?
Correct. Yeah, we moved the old system because we have to monitor the SCADA until we get all the new equipment installed and up and running, so.
Okay, so this that we're approving tonight on the step four, why was not step four included with the first three steps when we approved those?
Justin might be better to answer that. I wasn't involved with that portion of it. So I'll have Justin come up and speak to that.
Hi, Justin.
Oh. To answer your question, when the master agreement was approved back in 2016, like Mr. Clegg says, like Mr. Clegg says, there were four tasks in the master umbrella with Brown and Caldwell. The city council at the time did not want to approve all four tasks at, at, at the, at that moment. They wanted to go step by step and make sure that we weren't approving something that we weren't going to be able to follow through with. And so as we've gone through, and we've purchased the, the software portion of it, we've purchased the hardware portion of it, we've done the master plan. Task one was doing a huge study, and if the study came back one way or the other, it could have changed the outcome of the other tasks. And so, the city council at the time intentionally just went step by step through this, but they did approve kind of this master umbrella agreement with, with Brown and Caldwell. We've been doing amendments. This is the second amendment to include that fourth task into their, into their work program.
Have we purchased the new system yet? I, I suppose not, since you don't have it.
We, the, the contract with APCO was approved by council a couple of months ago. We've begun purchasing equipment, including new antennas and receivers for the new Public Works Building, but there's still, we've got dozens of water sites around the city that will be getting new equipment as part of this project.
So this system isn't just the system that goes in the Public Works Building, it's also systems that go at, throughout the city at the different locations?
That's correct. It'll go, it'll go on each of our.
Would you explain what a SCADA is for the public? And explain what we're purchasing, what it does, and the necessity of it?
So what a SCADA system is, the acronym is absolutely ridiculous.
Justin, Justin, it's, it's me. Pull the mic up just a little bit, we want to make sure that everybody can hear you.
That's kind of loose. A SCADA system is really a communications system between the different water sites that we have around the city, back to a central location where we can monitor those. So we would have a SCADA, a SCADA system, we could put that at a well, and that, it will tell us the health of the motor, how much water is coming out of the well, it'll tell us the temperature of the motor, it'll give us dozens of different indicators that tell us the health and, and well-being of that particular site. Without a SCADA system, we would have to send a person there several times a day to physically check on the different aspects of it, the oil levels, the temperature, the pressures, all that kind of stuff. We have 13 different super meter sites from Jordan Valley Water, we have four different wells, we have about a dozen reservoirs, and about 40 or 50 different pressure-reducing valves located around the city. To manually check all of those is just not feasible. And so, water systems, and we're no exception, water systems all over the place, put in this communication software to be able to monitor what's going on at each of these different sites, depending on whether or not it's a well, or it could be a booster pump, or a reservoir, you want to learn different information about that so that you can continue to provide water to the residents.
So, may I just, so, so if I understand what you're saying correctly, the SCADA system notifies somebody in Public Works if a pump that's, what do they call it, sewage? I mean, it's, what is that?
It, it's just culinary water.
Oh, just culinary? But, but it, it, it knows the level of the tanks, it's communicating what pumps are working so that residents have water. I mean, that's the end result.
Right, so in the Public Works Building, we can monitor how full each of the tanks are, how many booster pumps are working, at what level they're working at, making sure they're operating in within their proper temperatures. We can make, make all those checks from a computer at the Public Works Building, and we can make changes from the Public Works Building if we need to.
Councilmember Burton, I think I interrupted you.
Thank you. So the system that we approved a couple of months ago, this is what we're preparing for, and it'll go in the same location the old one is in, or next one, I guess we have to keep that one going until we switch over to the new one. So they're going in the same room, I'm guessing, at the Public Works Building? Will we have any downtime?
So the, the antenna has already been installed, and the receivers are installed, and so we can monitor the existing SCADA system from the new Public Works Building. The, there's still a couple other equipment changes we need to do within the building, and plus we need to switch out all of the old equipment that's all around the city. Much of that equipment is 30 to 40, maybe even older, years old. We're looking at some, and, and there's some sites that we still can't read electronically, that we have to go send and, and manually take readings on those, those sites. So the new SCADA system implements new technologies, new securities, and lets us read additional information from those sites so we can make sure that we're staying on top of, of everything happening in the system.
On the new system, it is not interchangeable with the old system then, so the antennas on the old system will not communicate the information to the new system? So we have to replace even the antennas, is that correct?
Uh, no. There's lots of different pieces to, to a SCADA system, hundreds of different components. Things like the antennas, we can reuse the antennas where we can, but most of the other components in there are decades old, and so we can't reuse a lot of that equipment.
Does the old system and the new system interchange at all? Can the new system talk to the old components in remote locations?
Yes.
Okay. If we were to postpone this new system a few months, could we use some of the money for the new system to pay for the tanks that we have bond obligation for, to hold us over on that until we get our water monies straightened out?
I would say no, because the council has already approved a contract with APCO, and they've already begun doing that work, and so there's contract obligations to proceed on that.
Thank you.
And plus, it's not enough money to build a tank with.
Thank you. Councilmember Whitelock has a question.
Do we anticipate more amendments for the system, or should this be the end of the expense for this?
This is the end of it. Task four was the last task in the master agreement.
Thank you.
Councilmember Lamb has a question.
Oh, sorry to have a question. I was gonna, I was gonna move to approve Resolution 18-152.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a motion by Councilmember Lamb, and a motion by Councilmember Whitelock, and Mayor Writing. Any discussion to the motion? Seeing none, let's vote. Melanie.
Mayor Protem Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Mayor Writing?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamb?
Yes.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitelock?
Yes.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Vote passes seven in favor.
All right. Thank you. Next on the agenda is Public Hearing 8A, Receive Public Input and Consider For Approval Ordinance 18-29 Regarding a Future Land Use Plan Amendment for Approximately 7.33 Acres From High-Density Residential to Public Facilities and Rezone 7.33 Acres for Property Located at 6732 South, 5600 West, From a PC-ZC Planned Community with Conditions to PF Public Facilities, City of West Jordan, Appleton, Scott Langford.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. You can see by the slide that this includes several parcels along the west side of 5600 West, just north of 78 South. Essentially, this is a housekeeping item. This property was converted, and, and several years ago, to a stormwater detention pond. It's very, it's a long linear pond, and the request for the land use map amendment and rezoning is essentially to match the land use to what it's currently built as, which is a stormwater facility. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Jacob.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. It's not so much a que, well, it's kind of a question. When you drive by it, it doesn't look like a storm detention pond, it looks like weeds. Oh, sorry, native grasses. Is, is there a possibility, we'll talk about cost maybe later, of making it pretty? Doing something grass would be nice, something with the conservation gardens to make it not necessarily grass, but still pretty. It's just, it's a major arterial, it's a big entrance into our city, especially with Mountain View right there, things like that. What do you think? I'll take anybody.
I can speak on a little bit of the maintenance of it right now, but my knowledge is, is this is going to come piece by piece, and as it's come to the city as, piece by piece, it's been placed under our weed management plan. And so, within our weed management plan, it's, it's essentially maintained, you know, two to three times a year as far as cuts. Some of these areas just come onto our radar recently, so we're still playing a little bit of catch-up on that. And so, to my knowledge, there hasn't been any, you know, native seed planting or irrigation system installed there to make that area look any better than it is. And so, at this point, it's just managing and cutting the weeds, and so.
Okay, but down the road, is there, I mean, I, if you, if you need spots to be put on your radar, I've got a list. Down the road, will there be options as far as, and I don't want native grasses because they look just like that, of some sort of manicuring and things to, for things like this? We've got this, we've got this spot out by the Maples on 78 South, between 64th West, between the fire station and Bacchus Highway. There's places like this all over the place that look just like this, and yeah, we mow them three times a year, and some of them have sprinklers and they get watered, which is nice because then the weeds grow faster. But, so just, I'm just looking for options going forward. This is, this is case in point of what we need to do to make our city look better, is Exhibit A right here. So, just looking for options, ideas, suggestions. We'll talk about funding, of course, down the road, but I'm just wondering what can be done.
And I don't, I'm just going to ask a question, because I, I think there's, I think there's some nice things that we can do, but maybe it doesn't involve grass and lots of watering and maintenance. So we have, on one hand, I think, the, the native grasses, and on the other hand, we have nice green grass with trees and playgrounds or what have you. Could there be a happy medium somewhere in the middle where it's not all native grasses and it's not green grass?
I actually was in a two-hour meeting with the Jordan Valley Water Conservancy District yesterday, discussing a matter of arterial streets and design, and so we were looking into some of the arterial design currently. Areas like this, obviously, funding would be an issue, as Councilmember Jacob has mentioned. Native grasses are definitely probably one of the most misunderstood landscaping designs that we've ever put in this city, and they're perceived as weeds, and so we do need to have this conversation and come up with some different concepts, and hopefully someday bring a presentation to you guys and let you guys choose how you'd like the city to appear.
Thank you, David. Councilmember Whitelock.
So, Mr. Naylor, when you were at that meeting, it's been a while, but I know at a meeting I was at with one of their employees, they mentioned a grant. Was that brought up? Do they still have that grant available? Because one of the things they wanted was high-profile areas, and this certainly would fit that bill.
They did mention two grants. One currently is being utilized by the city right now for one of, one of the programs that I believe is on the agenda, or is on consent tonight. The other is the Landscape Leadership Grant, and we did have a discussion over that, and we'll be looking at that further.
Perfect, thank you.
Do you have something to add, Mr. Brickie?
Well, I just, some background so the council appreciates. One of the reasons this parcel has obtained the level of look, if you will, is it has been involved in litigation for several years. The city just resolved the litigation this past year, I think within the last three months, actually, and so we're going to have to, now, now that we've acquired it free and clear of any other claims, we can begin to do what you think is best with it.
Okay, see no more questions. Thank you. This time, I will open the public hearing on this item. If there's anyone present who would like to address the council on this issue of the rezone, please come up to the podium. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and return it back to council. Councilmember Whitelock.
I move that we approve Ordinance 1829 Regarding a Future Land Use Plan as written, and the zoning.
Second.
Mayor Writing is second, so we have a motion by Councilmember Whitelock, and a second by Mayor Writing. Is there any discussion to the motion? Seeing none, let's vote.
Councilmember Whitelock?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye. Did that not come through?
Yes. Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamb?
Yes.
Mayor Writing?
Yes.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Vote passes seven in favor.
All right, thank you very much. We'll now go to business item 9A. Discussion on Possible Action Regarding Resolution 18-151 Approving an Increase to the City of West Jordan's Solid Waste Fees. Brian Clegg.
Thanks, Mayor Protem. Justin is here tonight to present on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem and council. About six weeks ago, we presented this item to the council for their review and consideration. At that meeting, the council directed staff to take it back, do a survey on, with the residents, to, to get their feel for the different attitudes regarding solid waste and recycling. We've completed that survey, those results are in your packet, and so we're coming back with you to, to discuss what we need to do to the Solid Waste Fund with regards to either adjusting the rate or adjusting the services. So I, I don't have a formal presentation. I do, I did speak with Ace Disposal this morning about that, about the different issues they're facing us. Really comes down to operational costs. The, the issue is, really has nothing to do with the contractor that's performing their services. The costs have to do with the rising costs of tipping fees at the landfill, which have increased from $14 to $16 per ton of garbage waste. Our green waste disposal costs have gone from $0, it used to be free to dispose of our green waste, that's gone up to $6 per ton at the landfill, and the cost to dispose of our recycling has gone from relatively zero to, it, it varies as a commodity between $0 to $20 in cost. That cost has gone up to $55 per ton to dispose of recycled materials. And so these operational costs have put the, the Solid Waste Fund in the red, and that information's in your packet, as, as well as the attitude of the different residents, and be willing to answer any questions you might have.
Councilmember Lamb.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I'm, I'm just wondering if you've heard, obviously you're saying the costs are going up, is this affecting everyone in the valley? Every city, every city's getting the same requests, saying pay more, or you don't, won't take your garbage?
So, we're actually very fortunate. The Trans Jordan landfill is one of the cheaper landfills in the whole country. At $16 per ton, we're extremely fortunate. I mean, the, the average around the, around the country is about $35 to $50 per ton. Some of the more metropolitan areas can see their tipping fees much higher than that. Seeing that adjustment from 14 to 16, we're still in a very good position. We have a very beneficial relationship with the Trans Jordan landfill. However, the, those cost adjustments are going from $14 to $16 per ton, and the $0 to $6 on our green waste, is just natural cost escalations for them to be able to continue to do their. and the zero to six on our green waste is just natural cost escalations for them to be able to continue to do their business.
So, I guess my concern, and this isn't pointed directly at you or our city staff, it's more pointed at the Transjordan landfill. Basically, they've come to not only West Jordan, but everyone said, sorry, it's gonna cost more this year. Do they show why it's gonna cost more, or are we all just saying, okay, great, we'll pay you more?
The city has a board member on the Transjordan landfill board. I am not that person, so.
It's a former councilmember, Newton, right? Former mayor, Newton?
I believe so. And so, he would be able to answer the details on how the board acted with regards to raising the rates at the Transjordan landfill. I, I don't have that information.
Okay, I think, and, and the reason I bring that up is because as a councilmember and as a citizen who's gonna get this bill in the mail when the change happens, sometimes it just happens and we don't tell people why. We just tell them because it's gonna cost more. And I would like to be more open with the people of West Jordan, and I hope the rest of the cities are as well, that they can show why these costs are happening. Because, because right now, all I can see is, pay two dollars more, or we won't take your garbage, which we don't want to have happen, everyone wants their garbage taken away. So, just some thoughts there as we are discussing adding more fees to garbage when we just barely signed a contract. What, was it four months ago? Thank you.
You know, to answer your question partially, while, while I don't have specific details, I know that the Transjordan landfill has been actively searching for a future solution to the landfill. We've been told that the landfill has between five to fifteen years of life left in it. So, they've invested in additional landfill space in Utah County and have been saving up money for transfer stations to be able to accommodate the, the five-member cities once the landfill is at its capacity. So, they are, they are planning for some, for some future issues with the landfill.
Okay, not more. Councilmember Jacob?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. In the contract with ACE, what, what is the provision as far as if? Because our contract's not with Transjordan landfill, it's with ACE. And ACE, I assume, has a contract with West Jordan landfill. Is there a provision in our contract with ACE about what happens if ACE's costs go up?
So, our tipping fees are with the Transjordan landfill. We pay the Transjordan landfill directly for the cost of all of the waste that's disposed of there. We don't, that doesn't go through ACE Disposal, that's directly with them. The recycling materials goes through ACE Disposal. They pay those costs instead of us.
We had that discussion like a year ago or so. Okay, so when a, when an ACE truck pulls up to the landfill, they have to tell the landfill which city
That's correct.
that truck is coming from, so they, no, okay.
And, and then they weigh that truck, they disp, they dispose of the materials from the truck, and then the city receives a bill for the weight of the waste materials directly from the landfill.
Would it be possible, I, I looked at all the different options that were in here as far as reducing the amount we'd have to increase, and, you know, there are a lot of options, eliminate this program, change that program. And one of them that I liked a lot was going the recycling to every other week. Can we go to recycling every other week but keep green waste on an every-week schedule? Because I think the way it was phrased in here is put recycling and green waste on every other week and alternate it, or whatever it was. Can we just do that with recycling only, and would that have a material impact?
That's definitely something that can be negotiated. The current contract that we have allows a provision for us to modify the contract to make adjustments like this, but it has to be mutually agreed upon. And so, we would, we could take the direction from the city council back and, and begin those negotiations if, if that's the direction.
And I'll explain, just for the council's benefit, why I like that option, just for your consideration. And I, I heard some comments on social media and things that, well, if we raise, or if we take recycling to every other week, then I'm just gonna have more stuff in my trash can on the other weeks. But that's part of our problem anyway, is that more of that stuff is going in the recycling that shouldn't. So, I think that might encourage people to be more careful in what they do put in the recycling to make sure that it's, it comes out, I don't know if the word, more pure, but I'm gonna use that. It comes out more recyclable and less contaminated than what's going into the recycling cans now. I think it'll have an educational benefit, it'll have a practical, like a side benefit. Somebody approached me after the last time we talked about this, after the meeting, I wish I could remember who it was, and said that that had been tried in their city or somewhere else, and it had a huge effect on the contamination rate of their recyclables. So, that's something I'd like to try. Leave that up for discussion. Other than that, making a second can more available is always good. But that's, that's the one that I'd like to try first. I'm not really in favor of putting a, a fee on the dumpster program. I think that'll have an unintended consequence of people not reserving a dumpster and therefore just making messes. Maybe not, but I think that might be an unintended consequence. I'm all in favor of the Christmas tree change as well, eliminating the pickup and providing a drop-off location. Fewer, fewer people get real trees every year, I think. So, I think that would be a good, a good step as well. Let's leave that out there for now.
Thank you. Councilmember Whitelock?
So, when I looked at my options and looked at what the surveys were, this is what I gleaned. Most people don't care about the Christmas tree pickup, so I agree with Councilman Jacobs that that should go. I'm not sure how much the e-waste and shred event is utilized, but I do know that people from other cities utilize it as well, so it's not just our citizens. So, I think that that one could go, in my opinion. The glass recycling, I think that could go. And I slightly disagree with Councilmember Jacobs on the dumpsters. I feel like it's a neighborhood dumpster, so if it's put in your driveway and you want it just for your personal use, then I think maybe we should think of a fee for that. If it's on the street, I agree with him, but I think there might be unintended consequences of getting rid of that program. But I would, I, I think if you're gonna put it in your private driveway, which means I'm using it, doesn't always happen that way, but usually people respect it when that's in the driveway. I think maybe we should attach a fee. I recently took a load of rocks and dirt to the dump and gave them about fifty dollars, and that was just a pickup truck load. I could get a lot more in a dumpster, although it's not allowed, or I would have done that. So, I think it should maybe be a, a combination of things, not just choose, choose an option. I think we should come up with a different option than's been presented. So, I'm okay eliminating those and perhaps charging, you know, I don't think it should be much. I, I think fifty dollars is probably a good fee if I want it just in my driveway, and I think that would help off, offset what everybody else is paying. And I'm going to give credit to Mayor Protem Anderson on this one because we talked about it. And, and when we eliminate the glass recycling and the, and the Christmas tree and, and for me, the e-waste and shred, because I can buy a shredder at Walmart for ten bucks. I think we should set aside some of that money, though, for education. Because as I walk my neighborhood every morning, I cringe as I see wood sticking out of recycling cans. And the stuff that people, they, some people definitely are just using them as trash cans. So, I do think we need to do something to educate. So, I'd like, that would be my input, is I'd like to see a variety of things used, not just one choice.
Thank you. Councilmember Lamb?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. So, real quick, Justin, so the tipping fees are, are what is going up. So, our contract with ACE, which includes recycling right now, are we able to amend that contract if we cut the recycling in half?
We can definitely go back to them and, and discuss that with them. As I mentioned before, any modifications require mutual agreement. And so, we can't make demands upon them, but if they agree to a reduction or a change in service, that's something we can bring back to council as a contract amendment.
So, I think the whole, the whole idea behind discussion tonight is to keep waste fees where they are and not raise them. And so, if we were able to cut off half of the weeks of the month and keep those fees down, I would be, that would be my vote. I'm not sure about the glass recycling, I've never recycled glass. Are those just certain areas in the city where those are put?
So, to explain some of these other minor programs, the glass recycling, we have two drop-off locations. There's one that's at the end of Seventy-Eight Hundred South, the very far west end of the city, up by the Sycamores. And there's another one that is located at the rodeo parking lot. There's two of them.
And how often are they picked up?
They are picked up when they're full. And so, when they are full, we pay three hundred and fifty dollars, they come and they empty those and recycle those, and then they return the dumpsters.
Do you have an idea of how many times a year those are picked up? Ten, fifteen?
No, it's usually less, it's usually about six to eight, if I remember correctly.
I, I, I don't see that cost, taking that away, keeping the cost down, because that's such a minimal.
It's three hundred and fifty dollars to dispose of the glass. With the other programs like the Christmas tree, there's two different aspects to the Christmas tree. There's the curbside pickup, which is similar to a green waste that happens in December and January. So, they send a green waste truck, they pick up the, the Christmas trees there at the curbside. And then there are three locations identified around the city where people can go and drop off their Christmas trees, and then they're picked up from that location. One of the reasons why we like the Christmas tree program, before that got into the, into the contract, we found that people would just drive them out and then push them out the back of their truck, and they would show up on the side of the street. And that means staff has to go stop what they're doing to go pick up a Christmas tree that somebody just, just got rid of inappropriately. And so, we like having at least some location for people to drop off those Christmas trees to be able to properly dispose of them.
Thank you.
And then the e-waste shred event is actually extremely popular, most cities do that. Most cities do it at least once a year. We do ours four times a year, and we have people lined up probably a good thirty minutes before the event even begins to, to take advantage of that service.
Yeah, I attended that, and you're, you're right, that's fairly well-attended. There might have been a question of, I didn't, I didn't get ID'd when I went, so there could be a question of, some people don't get ID'd, but, you know, I, I can't control that. But so, my last, my last question would be, going back to the recycle, because that seems like it's gonna be the best route that we can go, by cutting it in half, you know, going every other week with recycle, do you see that, just taking that one off, keeping the costs where they need to be?
To, to go back to one of the comments that one of the other council members made, if, if we do away with, if we, if we reduce the recycle to every other week, that material's gonna end up in the garbage, or some of that material will end up in the garbage. So, it's not a, a, a straight one-for-one trade-off. It will be something that we have to negotiate on what that cost savings would be. Another idea that just got brainstormed this afternoon is the potential of creating an opt-out program for those that are just using it as a second garbage can and are not serious about recycling. We even tossed around the idea theoretically here of, if the, if the rate were to be increased to, to fifteen-seventy-five or sixteen dollars per month, but those that opt out of the recycling program could receive some sort of discount off of their monthly bill for not participating in the recycling program. We'd hope that that would mean that those that are participating in recycling are doing it properly. And so, it would reduce our costs associated with disposing of the material. So, an opt-in or an opt-out program is, is something that could be viable.
Thank you. Councilmember Burton?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. My first question is, in the old ACE contract, they were responsible for providing education. I looked at the new one, I didn't see that. Is that not in the current contract?
In the, in the previous contract, they provided a dollar amount to the city that the city would use for education, rather than, so you're really taking money from one hand, paying it to a person, then receiving it back on the other hand? So, rather than asking them to pay us for education money that we're paying them for, we took that out of the contract, and so, we have a, we have money just set aside in our solid waste budget right now that doesn't have to make the loop through the collection contractor.
So, it is not in the contract, we just handle it in-house?
Correct, the contract just takes care of basic collection services.
On the glass, I realize that that's a very low price. If we didn't have the glass recycling, that means it would probably go into trash and we'd have to pay whatever that is per ton. On glass, it's just a flat fee, it's not a per-ton fee, and glass is heavy. So, I'm thinking that would probably cost us more, do you know, if we had to pay to take it to landfill? It's hard to say.
It's hard to say, I don't know how much those weigh, but I agree with you, glass tends to be pretty heavy, and I, I'm sure it pays for itself.
And I would think it would, so I think that'd be a wise one to do. And then on the dumpsters, we require people to put the dumpsters in their driveway during the winter months when snow piles can get violent.
That's correct.
So, I don't see that that would be an alternative that would be effective, because they could only get dumpsters in the summer months, not the winter months, if we charged them for having it in the driveway.
The, the vast majority of the dumpsters, though, are during the spring, summer, and fall. The, the neighborhood collection program is used very, very sparsely during the winter because of that requirement to put it in their driveway. A lot of people use their driveway either for parking vehicles or as a way to get the cars out of the garage. And so, it's, a driveway option is used by very few people.
And then on the electronics, I'm thinking something similar on that per pound for what we pay. We may be coming out ahead by keeping that out of the landfill and doing electronics and the shredding.
We are, the, the e-waste, so what a lot of people don't understand is electronic waste is toxic. You really shouldn't be putting that into your garbage can. If you have an old laptop or old computer parts or an old television, there are special recycling places you can take that to. The landfill does accept certain types of household appliances, residential quantities from people that live in the member cities. But properly disposing electronics is, is actually pretty important for our environment. Throwing those in the garbage can is just not the way to go.
Okay, so, from that discussion, I'm, I'm thinking we should keep glass, we should keep the recycle, I mean, the shred, and, and electronics recycling. And then we go to talk about normal recycling, even though normal recycling is costing more than it has before, is it less, is still less than regular trash, is that correct? It costs more than regular trash?
Reci, currently, currently, it costs fifty-five dollars per ton to dispose of recycling materials, and it costs us sixteen dollars per ton to dispose of garbage.
Sixteen or six zero?
Sixteen, one-six.
So, sixteen per ton for?
For garbage.
For garbage and fifty-five dollars per ton?
Fifty-five dollars per ton for recyclable materials. So, it's almost four times the amount to dispose of recyclable materials. There's just, I, there's been a number of articles, both in KSL and the Salt Lake Tribune and other national sites where the recycling market is, it, it's in dire struggles. There's really very little market for recyclable materials right now. Companies and countries that normally bought them have ceased to buy those materials, so a lot of recycling facilities, and there's two in, in the Salt Lake Valley, and many of them are just holding on to materials hoping that the commodity rates change to be able to start selling those again. The vast majority of material right now is just being diverted to the landfill for lack of storage space.
So, I'm assuming our cost on that must be from the recycling company in Transjordan, because as I look at the ACE contract, they charge us less to pick up recycling than they do trash. As I look at it, I see the three-seventy-five a month for mixed waste for the first contact, container, and green waste, oh, sorry, recycling, one container per household is three-thirty-five, so that is lower.
The numbers that they bid on the per-unit cost do not accurately reflect the true cost of it takes to dispose of materials. To dispose the materials, you, the garbage rates are supplementing the cost to dispose of the recyclable materials.
But if we do away with our green waste pickup, they're gonna be charging us more for the other waste pickup, I presume, because that's a higher fee?
If we do away with green waste?
I'm sorry, I didn't say green waste, I was wrong, recycling.
If we did away with recycling, we'd be doing them a favor, because it's costing them an arm and a leg to, to pay for that aspect of the contract.
By the way, when I did the electronics recycling and shredding? By the way, when I did the electronics recycling and shredding, they didn't ID me. In fact, it was you, so thank you for doing that.
All right, before I go to Councilmember Whitelock, I just had a couple of questions on the, on some things you said. So if due to the lack of storage space, they're taking garbage to the dump, that's being charged sixteen dollars a ton. It's fifty-five dollars a ton to go to the recyclers.
So, um, it takes, it costs fifty-five dollars per ton to drop off the materials at the recycling center. At that point, the material, the, the trucks unload the material, the recycling center goes through the material, determines, uh, how much of the waste is unusable or how much of the recycling material is unusable. And then they scoop that up, load it into another truck, and then they take that to a landfill. They do not get the same rates that we get for the Transjordan. Um, the Transjordan rates for non-member cities is, I believe, in the forties, about in the forty dollars per ton range. And so to, to include those costs for them sorting, reloading a truck and then taking those to a landfill and disposing of those as a non-member agency is where the costs come from.
Okay, so if, if due to the lack of storage, if the recycling truck picks up a bunch of recyclables and the recycler can't accept that load, they just go to the dump and they were billed, we were billed sixteen dollars a ton?
No, at that point, the bill goes to the recycling center who returns bills the co- the contractor who dropped off the materials. We don't pay that bill currently.
The, the materials are actually dropped off at the recycling facility. The truck's not denied and sent to the landfill straight away.
I, I understand, but Justin said that there's not storage, so the trucks just go to the dump, that's?
No, different, different trucks go to the dump. So when the, when the trucks with our recyclable materials go to the recycling center, they just drop off the materials and then they leave. And then the recycling center goes through the materials, uh, reuses what they, or they pick out the stuff that they can and then they scoop up the stuff that they can't use, load those into a completely different truck. It could be a, a dump truck for all I know. And then they take it to the landfill and then they pass those costs back through, um, the recycling center and the contractor.
So then there is no trucks that because of lack of storage, they just go directly to the dump? Everything, every recycle truck goes to the recycler?
Correct.
So, and if they don't have storage, then they load it up in another truck and take it to the dump?
Correct. And then they bill the, and that's where the, the collection contractor is being billed fifty-five dollars per ton to dispose of the waste.
Okay, so again, bear with me. Um, so a few things. The residents, based on the survey, I think it was close to twelve hundred, had indicated um, that they would be fine keeping things as it is. So I, I, I've come up with some ideas just today as I've been thinking about this. That deals with education. I did attend, uh, back in November, December, I think it was, a meeting at Jordan or Transjordan landfill. And yes, the recycling is changing with what they accept, so I'm just wondering if maybe there's a, a simpler way. My recycling cart is not as big as my garbage cart. And with a family of six, we fill it up every week, so personally, I like the recycling every week, but here's my idea. I think as part of the education, we drop the curbside Christmas tree pickup, which saves us a couple thousand dollars. And we might need more money than that to, to do a good education program. My thoughts are that we just focus on recycling three things, which are things that I think are being needed and um, would eliminate much of the fifty-five dollar dumping. And that is that the only three things that we accept in recycling, still picking up every week, is cardboard boxes, metal cans, plastic milk jugs. And that's it. Everything else goes into the garbage can.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that, cardboard?
Um, cardboard boxes, metal cans, you know, like your Chef Boyardee rinsed out or your condensed milk pumpkin pie mix. Green beans, canned corn.
Steel cans and aluminum cans.
I can go on. And then plastic milk jugs. So those are the only three things. And then we, we use the money um, from the two thousand that we save on curbside Christmas tree pickup. And we, we might need more and I'll leave that to Bill and, and city administration. If there's a way to educate our residents that, that are recycling are those three items, and, and then I want your thoughts on this. And then instead of opting in and out, uh, sw- swap a can. If you don't wanna do recycling, you can get a second garbage can. If you wanna do recycling, you can, you have, in other words, you have the three cans. You have the green, the recycling and a garbage, or I can have green waste and two garbage. And I don't know the feasibility and I don't know if that has, you know, I'd, I'd hate to be someone that says, well, I want recycling this month, I want a second can next month, I'm gonna go back to recycling the third month. I don't want it to be, it's like you commit for six months or you commit for a year. But what, and I don't know, David or Justin, what was the feasibility of doing something, something like that?
Um, again, that would have to be, uh, discussed in a contract renegotiation. Um, but to your point, the recycling containers are sixty-five gallons and the garbage containers are ninety-five gallons. So they're about two-thirds of the size. Um, being able to just swap one for one, uh, the carts themselves cost, the city has a budgeted, uh, a cart replacement when they get damaged or broken. Um, and those cost about sixty dollars apiece. And so if we were to just, if we were to start changing out one for one, a blue cart for a black cart, um, there would be some additional costs associated with changing those carts out. And then if people are diverting their, the recycle materials or the stuff that shouldn't go in the recycle can to the garbage can, if I understand you correctly, we were, we would just try to be, to encourage them to use the black cart by letting them have a black cart, am I?
Well, I was just thinking, if, if they didn't want to do recycling, they could request a second black cart.
Okay.
They don't have to, if, I guess, sort of, I guess it would be knocked out.
Um, no, I, I think that's a great idea. Um, the only thought that I have is, um, is purchasing additional black carts to be able to swap out for people. Uh, we have twenty-four thousand plus households in the city. Uh, we don't maintain that kind of a stock to be able to switch out even a thousand carts. Um, that would be my only thought. It's something we could do, we could look into. Um, we just don't have that kind of, uh, stock on black carts.
And I, and I, and I get that. I, I would know that we're, we're not stockpiling garbage cans. Let me go to Councilmember Whitelock and then Mayor Writing.
So just so everyone knows, the, the county actually provides a green waste recycling and it's located in West Valley. So you can look that up on the internet. So Justin, I'm struggling with, with your answers.
Okay.
So do we pay the tipping fee for recycling or do we not?
We do not pay it for recycling. We do pay the tipping fee for garbage and green waste.
Okay, so.
But the cost do.
We already have a contract with ACE for recycling, so how is that going to save me money? If, first I have to negotiate with ACE to see if they'll even let me out of that part of the contract.
Correct.
And they may or may not. And then I don't pay the tipping fee for that anyway, so I'm missing something.
It, it, you're absolutely correct. Uh, we don't pay the tipping fee. Um, they're currently eating all of the costs for disposing of the recyclable materials, which is why, um, the contract costs went up from the last contract to the current contract. They built into some sort of, um, inflationary value on how much that was gonna cost for them to dispose of recyclables and they're currently handling all that. If, if it continues the way that it is at fifty-five dollars per ton to re- to get rid of the recycling and if the market doesn't rebound, um, then it's likely we would see what we saw a couple of years ago, where they would come back and ask for a, an adjustment to the contract uh, with regards to reasonable use and, and fair use to, to be able to cover their costs. Because when they bid on the contract initially, they did it with the, the assumption that it was going to cost twenty-two dollars per ton to dispose of recyclable materials, not fifty-five.
Yeah, and I remember several years ago, they came and said, we can't pay you for recycling anymore. But they negotiated the contract, they fought very hard to get our business. So that's how business works. Sometimes you call it right and sometimes you don't. Sometimes you win, sometimes you lose. So I don't see how getting rid of recycling for our city is gonna save us money if we already have a contract and we don't pay the tipping fee.
It, it would save us if we reduced the cost of service. They would, um, reduce the cost that they charge the city for that program.
How do we know that?
It would be negotiated as part of a contract renegotiation.
Yeah, but you're asked, yeah, yeah, we'd need to figure that out before we, before you got a vote from us, right?
Well, we need direction from the council to begin renegotiating a contract. That's not something that we can do. If the council decides they wanna keep the services the way they are and just change the, uh, the, the cost it takes to, to perform the service, then that's the, that's the direction that the staff will run with. If the city council wants to direct staff to renegotiate the contract with regards to certain aspects of the contract, that's something that we would then do. But we, but we would save money if we renegotiated the, the recycling contract with them.
And they agreed?
Correct.
Thank you.
Mayor Writing?
My question was answered. Thank you, Mayor Potem.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Burton?
Thank you, Mayor Potem. The part on the Christmas trees, seeing the two thousand, are you considering getting away with the whole program and, or just the curbside? That two thousand includes drop-off location and curbside. I think we ought to keep the drop-off location if we get rid of the curbside, so we don't have to go pick them up in various locations. So it wouldn't save us the two thousand, because the two thousand is both those mixed together, so.
I would just be curbside.
Okay, so I don't know what less, because it's all in one line, we have to negotiate that with ACE. So by what I'm hearing, I think we ought to send staff to go negotiate with ACE and come back with some numbers so we can make some decisions. One is, what would they charge us if we had no recycling at all? I think we ought to have that information to make that decision with. Two, what would they charge us if we did recycling every other week? And what would they charge us to deduct the, the Christmas tree curbside pickup, which isn't a big deal? And, because I don't see us cutting anywhere else, I see those are some options that we can look at. That, that would be the suggestion from me.
Uh, mi- might it be beneficial if, if the council comes up with what we, representing the city, is interested in and let them negotiate what our desires are? Is that what you just, but I, I think we need?
Well, that was to give us some numbers so we can look at it and see which way we wanna pursue, because we can't make the decisions without knowing the costs. So we, if we get the cost, then we can discuss it and see which way we wanna go. Right now, we can have ideas, but we can't get anywhere until we get back with some costs. I'm just giving some direction to get some costs so we can make decisions with it. But if there's another avenue additional, we want to throw in there, but I don't see us cutting anything else at all besides that. But perhaps you do.
Councilmember Jacob?
Wasn't there a, uh, there were costs in the survey that the residents took? If we eliminate half the recycling, it's going to, it may save us four dollars a month or whatever it was. I don't know what the numbers are, so I don't, I'm not looking at the survey right now, but that was in the survey. It said, if you answer this, or if you like this change, it may change the rate this much. So there were numbers in there. I don't know where those numbers came from, but apparently they didn't come from ACE, right?
They were rough estimates by city staff.
Rough estimates from us, okay. So i- i- I don't think we necessarily wanna vote based on rough estimates. But I, I would agree though, if we were gonna give direction to staff to go negotiate, I would negotiate on the recycling every other week. I'd negotiate on the Christmas tree options there. And what was the other one? Uh, oh, and getting rid of recycling altogether, I don't think that'll fly politically, speaking. Um, I think the residents want to recycle and pay for the cost of it, just because recycling is a, a good thing to do. Um, whether it costs more or not. And whether it's actually recycled or not. We, we like having the blue can, gosh darn it. And why isn't it green, by the way? Oh, because we already have a green one. That's right. So yeah, those were, those would be the things I would agree we would need numbers on.
Right, thank you. Councilmember McConaughey?
Uh, thank you, thank you, thank you. Number of thoughts. First off, um, I, I see this as a zero sum. Well, first of all, are you guys able to hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. I see this as a zero sum game. If we're, I, I, I don't see the amount of uh, the, the amount of items being disposed, I don't see the quantity, uh, changing. So as we're looking at what can we do here and there, if we reduce cycling, I think solid waste is gonna go up if we wha- wha- whatever we sh- like, it's almost kinda like a shell game. So whatever we do, I think we're going to have to see changes to the rates because I don't imagine it'll be overnight that we start seeing habits changing and how people dispose what they have. So I, I think we do have a need to modify the rates and it needs to happen pretty quickly. As we're looking at some of the, one of these things that we're doing that are very helpful, the shred event, um, we see a lot of that. I'm not one of the people that shows up. People.
You're, you're breaking up a little bit, Chris.
You are. Taco. Think we'd.
You're breaking up, Councilmember.
Any recommendations?
You just got, now we hear you. You might have to re-.
Okay.
Repeat the last few sentences.
I'm, I'm having a hard time hearing. I actually can't hear the dais mics. All the dais mics are calling, coming through on the podium. So I'm getting a lot of feedback hearing myself on this one too, so that's probably where some of the problems coming from. Anyway, um, I, I don't wanna get rid of the shred event or the electronic recycling. Um, the dumpster program, I, I don't wanna see us charging for that because, um, I, I don't think we could unless we were at our full rate. And it is something that benefits the full community, but it, it didn't sound like there's too much discussion on that, so I'll save my comments there. I will add to the history that it was about two years ago that we nearly doubled the number of dumpsters that we had. And at the time that we increased the number of dumpsters, uh, ACE also increased the cost to the city from about ninety dollars a dumpster to the hundred and six or so that we have now. So one option that we haven't discussed is potentially doubling that back to where we were a couple of years. We also actually ended up hiring an old person, uh, another idiot. It helped cover the increase due to the number of dumps. Free. It all, but. And I, okay, leaving a few collection points, but I agree with the, a comment made that perhaps we should no longer do curbside. Glass, um, it's not a substantial dollar amount and there are some folks who are very emphatically in favor of it. And like Councilmember Burton pointed out, um, I, it, it does set tonnage that would otherwise be going to the, um, landfill. So I, I think that's kind of a zero sum. I, I don't see a benefit or a detriment in that. The big one is the recycling and I'm not as optimistic about this one as, uh, I don't think the market's gonna bounce back, um, a- at least not in the short term, like in the next five years or so. I think we're going to be looking at some significant changes. My travels have taken me to a number of different places, news, and the city of Kirkland is suspending curbside collection on August twenty-second. The recycling provider there, Resource Management, has cited that out of November first, they will no longer accept mixed recyclables. The, the finances just don't work for it. Um, there's anticipation, uh, at least throughout the Midwest, that other facilities will follow suit. I don't think it's gonna be too long till we're in a similar situation, so I'm, I'm very worried about that. My thought is if we were to. My thought is if we were to announce to folks that we're going to be changing recycling to an
You're breaking up again, councilmember.
Program. This might be a good educational. Um. I'm almost wondering if it would be better for me to call somebody's cellphone and have you hold a cellphone up to the microphone.
Now we hear you.
We've got to get these microphones fixed. Um. My thought with recycling would be to move to a opt-in program. And then we notify residents that starting or months out, uh the recycle cans will be going away unless they decide to opt in. I think that that would help us div- what's going through the recycling plant. Um. Uh White Lock made an interest when she was talking about being divided up. I don't I I I think Ace is looking at the total cost of us as a customer, and they're out of all elements. I don't think, here's strictly what it costs for waste, here's strictly what it costs for recycling. I are subsidizing what it costs them to do recycling with what they're charging us for solid waste. So with that in mind, I think if we could help reduce the cost for recycling, I think it will help reduce our overall cost for solid waste. So that being a thought process, I would like to see us take substantial steps to help reduce the amount of contamination. And I think if we say we're going to an opt-in program only, we can also educate on what can be recycled, and if we say let's look at the types of recyclables, I think that would help out. Since we're having issues with the audio connection, I'll hold it there since I've shared the the majority of my thoughts, but um yeah, there you go.
Thank you, councilmember McConaughey. So it sounds like, I mean, uh what what kind of impact, I guess, Justin, would that have if, let's say, that we changed recycling to an opt-in program in January or at some point? At at some point like that, I mean, and then Ace would probably, or any any, whoever we had used would probably be very well open to reducing recycling pickups, I would imagine?
I'm sorry, I don't understand the question.
I I I I'm just, I guess, more of more of a statement, but if if we did something along the lines of a of an opt-in like councilmember McConaughey suggested, and we set a date at some point in the future, um I s- I suppose that the provider would be willing to renegotiate something that would heavily reduce the cost.
We can, we can ask them about that.
And then, is this something that we need to adopt tonight? Uh we're continuing to get into the red with the solid waste fund? What's that? Oh, Mayor Writing.
I would suggest that we direct staff to start, excuse me, start talking to Ace now, so that they, we can look at the options that would be available to the city through Ace. And opting, opting in, opting out, certainly an option that would be sitting on the table, but I think, I think tonight, I think we need to direct staff through the attorney's offices to start talking to Ace to see what we can then do.
Is that a motion?
Uh well, well, can we make a motion on that tonight? If it is a motion, if it is, it can be a motion, then I make that a motion.
Would you restate your motion?
To direct, let me start over. The motion is to direct staff through the attorney's offices to start negotiations with Ace on options for our citizens to reduce the uh fees associated with solid waste, such as an opt-in, opt-out for recycling.
Okay, so uh direct staff to opt in or opt out for recycling and come back with proposals.
No, the motion was to direct staff to start negotiations.
Oh, start, oh, thank you. Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you.
Melanie? Do you want to restate it? So.
I did it as best I can.
Okay, see if this works, Mayor.
Okay, Mayor Writing moved to direct staff to work with the attorney's office to start negotiation with Ace on options for our citizens to reduce, and that's where you cut out.
Opt in or opt out?
Well, then I've got that, to reduce the solid waste and and opt in or opt out with recycling.
Not not reduce solid waste, just opt in, opt out on recycling, right, Mayor?
Well, that was, that would just be an option of all the negotiations. Not singling that out, but as an, as one of the many options that could be negotiated with Ace.
Oh, well, I'd have to say yes.
That that was my intent.
Mayor? Can you text it to me?
Say again?
Can you send it through text to my cellphone? Because there's a part of it where you're talking about solid waste, where it's cutting out.
Okay, let me, let me restate it one more time.
Okay.
And hopefully it'll come through. Uh the motion is to direct staff through the attorney's offices to begin negotiations with Ace to look at options for reducing our solid waste fund.
Oh, okay, that's, okay, okay. So you're looking at options to reduce the costs of solid waste.
That is correct, and if this opt-in, opt-out happens to be one of those, great.
Okay.
Does everybody have that motion? I'll second for discussion. Okay, we have a motion on the table by Mayor Writing and a second for discussion by councilmember Jacob. To Lamb, thank you. Um, councilmember Burton.
Couple of comments. One is, if, are, do we need to have a full-fledged motion to give some direction to staff? As he just described, does that need to be a motion? Yes, that's.
That was my original question.
Oh, we have, we have a motion and a second.
Okay.
We can discuss the motion.
So my my discussion is, I don't want it to be that limited, and I don't think he meant for it to be that limited. So the items that I brought up before, I would just like to include that with with this, and just put it all together and just have you come back with those numbers so we can discuss it and decide what we're going to do.
Councilmember Jacob.
I I was going to say something uh almost directly opposite, but with the same intent. I don't think the motion is specific enough. I think we need to 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 throw in two or three options that we want to go negotiate specifically. If all we say is, go negotiate us a lower rate and bring us back some options, I I think it's too vague. I think right, we do, yeah, been there, done that, right? So I think we need to provide some specific direction, go negotiate an opt-in, opt-out recycling program. Go negotiate the every other week recycling program. And come back with the cost savings on those two things, and maybe something else if there's something else that that we can get four people to agree on. But I think those those two things, we can have a, we can have a vote then if we have something specific like that. I'm not willing to vote for what's on the table right now, but I think I I don't think we're going to leave without a vote tonight. I just don't think this is it.
Councilmember White Lock, oh. Mayor Writing.
I would accept a substitute motion if somebody wants to do that, to councilmember Jacob.
So I I wouldn't be favoring opt-in, opt-out of recycling, because I don't feel that that's really going to save Ace that much. If they send a truck through my neighborhood to pick up three cans, they're going to charge me the same amount if they're picking up three or a hundred and fifty-three, so while it sounds good, I don't think it's cost-effective. And when I look at the survey that we sent out, recycling in my documents show it as number set two. Residents ranked garbage number one and recycling number two. So if we're going to do anything with it, I could support every other week, but I I couldn't support opt-in, opt-out. I just don't think the cost savings will be there. And I really, I have some concern about negotiating with Ace, so I I agree that we need to give specific things, because pretty sure Ace will come back and say, drop recycling, and we can get it down, so you won't need to do a tax increase, a a fee increase, and and that's not what our citizens told us.
I'm going to call on councilmember McConaughey.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Um, not necessarily speaking for or against the motion, but I will point out that where we're at right now, uh the fund continues to lose money. And if we put off any changes to the rates, it's putting us in a position similar to what we've seen with our water, where it was put further and further, and then it just had to be more and more dramatic. Um I I would reiterate the comment that I made earlier, that I think it's a zero-sum game, where regardless of which container it goes into, people will have the same amount of trash or recyclables coming out of their home. So I I do think it would be uh beneficial to take action on the rates tonight. But at the same time, we could also take steps to figure out what we could do to minimize costs. But I don't think we're going to be able to maintain status quo on rates, um where even to the red. So that that would be my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Burton.
I would like to entertain a substitute motion. I would like to direct staff to come back with negotiated numbers from Ace for opt-in, opt-out for every other week on recycling, for no recycling, for no curbside pickup on Christmas trees. Did I miss any? And then, once we have those numbers, we can discuss that here. I really don't think some of those we will do, but I think if we have the information to make the decision, perhaps it'll surprise us and we'll have at least a reason for why we made the decision we did in addition to the survey from there. And I agree with councilman McConaughey. I think this needs to be done quickly, so if we could have this done. Oh, I need a second, that's right. That right. And and I want my next council meeting.
Will you restate your motion?
Yes, would you please?
Councilmember Burton moved to direct staff to come back with negotiated numbers, working with Ace's disposal, for opt-in, opt-out every other week, no recycling, no curbside pickup on Christmas trees, and then bring the item back for further discussion on September eleventh.
She's good, you're hired.
Thanks.
I'll second that motion, and then I'd like to discuss.
Okay, we have a motion by councilmember Burton and a second by councilmember Jacob. Councilmember Jacob.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not in favor of all the options either. Uh I don't know how much eliminating an opt-in, opt-out program is going to reduce, but you and Ace can figure that out and bring it back to us and then tell me. So I don't need the answers tonight. I just need to make sure we have the right question on the table. And I think now this is the right question on the table, so I'll be in favor of this motion.
Councilmember Burton.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. And the reason I want to quickly is because I agree with councilman McConaughey, the decision needs to be made soon. So if you can get that for us by the next council meeting, then we can make a decision at that time of what our rates and when they'll change and what things we will do with that. Thank you.
Councilmember White Lock.
I would wonder if we would be amenable to a substitute motion in, to include, I would like, um councilmember McConaughey brought up that a while back you increased the number of dumpsters by double, it sounded, I think he said, and and so that's like two hundred thousand if we if we went back to half. So I would like to also have them bring back what that would do. So are you, are you, well, it's Mayor, whose motion is it? It's yours? Oh, we can't have a second substitute then. Can we amend your motion? Will you amend it to include that? Thank you.
Councilmember Burton.
Amended. We're going to amend to add half dumpsters, half the quantity of dumpsters.
So allow them?
Do, yeah, give a price for half the quantity of dumpsters.
And I'll still second.
Okay. Um. Is everybody clear on the motion? Okay, I'm going to be I'm going to be of um opposition to this, um simply for the reason I think the residents have spoken what they wanted. And I th- we're just getting deeper into the red on our solid waste fund, and I think we can approve something like this and and renegotiate pricing. Seeing no more comments, let's call for the vote.
Councilmember McConaughey disconnected him. He's trying to do a reset, so and it looks like he's not on yet, so do we want to vote now? Yes, I'll vote. Okay. Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Councilmember White Lock?
Yes.
Mayor Writing?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Anderson?
No.
Councilmember Lamb?
Yes.
The vote passes five to one in favor.
Alright, we made it through that one. Do you want a ten-minute break?
Yeah, I move for a ten-minute recess.
About five.
Seven and a half. Okay, five.
Okay, we have a motion for a five-minute recess.
Second.
We have a second. So motion by councilmember Jacob, second by councilmember Burton. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Five-minute recess, which puts us back here at eight thirty-three.
You just lost thirty seconds.
Well, it's thinking now. Oh, that's.
Looks like we're taking a recess.
Yes, we're recessing. We're in recess.
Oh, wow, that's way too close to the mic.
No, that's because I'm at the lectern and I'm standing right on top of it. Oh, look, we can see your face.
Yeah, reading.
It was in the wrong USB port.
So, no, the audio.
It wasn't reading it.
So what's the audio? Melanie, we're able to hear the podium mic, but all of the
Melanie, we're able to hear the podium mic, but all of the council mics were not able to hear. Just the audio mics is coming through the speaker and being picked up, the podium mic. The regular mics on the dais aren't connected to the audio.
I'll take it.
Councilmember McConaughey, can you hear me? Do you hear me at all?
It doesn't sound, doesn't sound anywhere.
Doesn't sound any better at all.
No. Um, actually, maybe try Dirk's microphone and then the podium.
Chris, this is Alan. Do you hear me from the mayor's mic?
Yeah, I can hear that.
Okay.
Can you hear me from the podium?
I could hear Melanie sign at the podium.
Melanie's on the podium.
The podium mic is crystal clear. The Alan, your mic, is not even close.
The dais mics are the problem.
Yeah, it's just, we've had for like the last three years, the dais mics don't seem to be connected to the phone line directly, so. And where you were talking about the mayor breaking up, everything was crystal clear for me as the mayor was speaking. I didn't hear any breaking up at all.
Yeah, now, Chris, I was hearing the podium or all the dais microphones fine, but I didn't hear, you were breaking up when you were talking. Do either one of you hear me clear now, speaking from the dais?
Dais microphone's fine for me.
See, as Michael Oliver was just speaking there from the dais microphone, he's about half as loud and clear as you are on yours, about half as loud and clear as when people are speaking from the podium.
You know, in earlier today, I had not turned up my sound on my computer. And so I was telling him the same thing, and I can hear you, Michael, what makes you sound so... That's just a question for you. Do you understand all the way up?
No, my sound is fine because I hear you perfectly fine. I hear when like Justin Stoker was speaking from the podium, I heard him perfectly fine. But when Alan or Dirk speak from the dais, I hear them at half. And then when Justin would respond, it would be back to perfectly normal, so it's not my volume.
No, I think part of the problem is they're not speaking close enough to the microphone either.
What time are we set to reconvene? I might slip away and grab a quick drink.
Go grab a drink, we've got about a minute.
They're all running late.
Well, I don't wanna tell you, I know I can't do it for a man that has five hundred pounds of piss. So, well, I'll do something. I should. It's not everything. I feel like it's social. We got to see how the Coca-Cola is done. It's a doctor that puts it in iron. Well, it's one of those because somebody ordered a deep burr. Who's a nice order? How much?
Let me go ahead and reconvene us a little later than 8:33, but we're trying to work out some technical issues. So I think we'll see how this goes. So the next item is 9B and what this one is, is discussion of possible action regarding the West Jordan Chamber of Commerce. And this was a topic that was asked to come back by the council, so we don't really have a presentation on this topic, but wanted to, the council had several thoughts, and so there's been discussion. Right now, we have a month-to-month contract at the rate where the chamber, the 48,000, if I remember, and it's paid monthly on a month-to-month, not an annual contract. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over. I don't see video for Councilmember McConaughey, but I'm gonna turn it over to Councilmember McConaughey. There we go.
Apologies, I forgot to slide the cover over. I'll be. It's because of the significance of what we're scott, but I'll be into the, sometimes there are decisions that have to be, and I feel that's where we're at with our current arrangement with the chamber. I appreciate the attempts that are being made as of late to change the relationship, but I do have a number of questions on my mind. One of the things that stuck out very strongly to me, when Ms. Wild spoke earlier, that we're interested and had discussed merging with West Jordan City or bringing West Jordan City in. Of note, she specifically pointed out Sandy City potentially had that interest. So to that end, I would present, or based, really significantly based on that comment, I would present the following motion. I would move to direct staff to provide notice to discontinue our month-to-month contract extension with the chamber effective September 31st. Further, I would direct staff to ensure that West Jordan City continue as a member of the chamber. Thirdly, I would direct staff to prepare a request for proposal for chamber services. That would be the motion, and if there's a second, I do have a quick comment to add to the end of that.
I will second that motion for discussion.
Okay. So as the quick comment, as mentioned, where it was suggested that other chambers might be interested in combining with West Jordan, I would like to hear what they have to say, but at the same time, I would like for our current chamber to be able to have a fresh start and provide a new proposal to the city saying, this is what we would like to offer. These are the parameters of the services that we would like to provide, and here's what we think the benefits would be, and come up with a pricing mechanism accordingly. I think that trying to conform to an agreement that was in place from long before anybody currently involved was here, I think that's been problematic. So I think this is the easiest way for us to get a fresh start and look at all of the options that are out there. So that's why my motion. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember McConaughey. Councilmember Burton?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I find it interesting that we're going to stop this momentum that we have going and then try and restart at a later date. I think it'd be much wiser to come up with the other things we want first, as we keep this momentum going, and then make those changes we need. We can still come up with a fresh new contract. We can still come up with an RFP. We can still consider looking at other, combining with other cities, which I would be opposed to right off the bat. So I wouldn't have any problem with those items and having discussion over that to see what's the best way for the city. But to end the contract before we do all those, I think that would be a big mistake. We have a lot of businesses in West Jordan who depend on the Chamber of Commerce for communication between the city and the Chamber of Commerce, and the chamber represents all those businesses. And I don't want to stop that communication with all those businesses until we work something else out, so I would be adamantly opposed.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Burton. Councilmember Whitelock?
Uh-oh. Where did Chris go? Well, except I had a question for Councilmember McConaughey.
So, Councilmember Whitelock, why don't I let...
Councilmember Lamb go?
No, I was gonna let Mayor Writing go. Mayor? Mayor?
Yes, thank you, I will speak in favor of the motion. We wouldn't be leaving the chamber, we would still be a member of the chamber.
Rob?
Yes, Mayor Protem. I missed the initial comment about giving the chamber notice that our contract month-to-month will end when?
He said September thirty-first, but he meant September thirtieth.
The end of September.
Sorry, I didn't mean to include that extra one in there.
I'm just trying to, I have to pull the agreement out to make sure that thirty days is adequate under the contract that we renewed. It may be sixty, so we'd have to make that October. I'll look it up.
So probably as soon as possible.
I'll look it up while you...
Be happy to amend the motion to exclude that specific date.
I'll look that up while you're continuing.
I've got the, this isn't the current one, I've got the twenty-sixteen up here, and paragraph six is upon ninety days written notice to the other party.
I'll look up the current month-to-month right now.
I don't have the twenty-seventeen one, but twenty-sixteen is ninety days.
Should be a twenty-eighteen contract.
I don't, the eighteen would have been a proposal though, wouldn't it? Doesn't it run July to June?
That's where we did the month-to-month.
Yeah.
It was modified to month-to-month, but I think it's the twenty-seventeen that was modified month-to-month that went through June thirtieth of twenty-eighteen. All right, Rob's gonna look it up. Chris, or Councilmember McConaughey, you are online even though we don't see video, correct?
Yeah, I think the video was causing bandwidth issues, so we'll go audio only.
Okay. So Councilmember McConaughey is online, Councilmember Whitelock, we'll go back to you.
So I think Mayor Writing answered it because I just wanted to see if Chris intended, does Councilmember McConaughey intended for us to remain members as Mayor Writing stated?
Yes, there were three, three parts to the motion. Part number one was to, the month that would effectively end that fifty thousand dollars a year. Part number two was to ensure that we retain membership as at least members of the chamber. And then part number three was to issue a request for proposal that would be delivered to the current chamber as well as the others and allow them to draft a proposal recommending services that they could provide. The reason for the RFP instead of a request for quote was that instead of us dictating we want A, B, and C from the different chambers, there are different ideas and different approaches to how to support some economic development. So we get the best from all, the best perspective from everybody involved. So those were the three pieces.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Lamb.
I wanted to see if Mayor Writing needed more time, he got cut off. Is there anything else that Mayor Writing wanted to add if you want to ask him?
Mayor Writing, did you have anything?
Well, just to say that I was speaking in favor of the motion, I, I got cut off, albeit, but I just, I was speaking in favor of it.
Hey, did you have anything else, Councilmember Lamb? Okay, Councilmember Lamb.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I think we're here today, I think last, what was it, last council meeting, I said, let's put this off till the twenty seconds and make a decision then. I understand why we're back here tonight because what Chris is proposing, I understand and makes sense. The reason why we're at this junction is because we're questioning the forty-eight thousand for the year. That's where the whole thing has come from. Why are we paying that much? What are we getting? I think Asia and the chamber provided what they're giving us. I think they've shown that to us, they've shown that to Kent, they've shown that to the city. But I do agree with Chris, until we make that decision, until we decide whether or not we're gonna continue with that, that we should have that September thirtieth date. Because at this point, with July, August, and September, that's twelve thousand already of the forty-eight thousand, so we're already getting up to that forty thousand anyway. So I would speak in favor of this motion as well, and I want, I guess, what I want to say is, I like what the chamber does, I like what they've done, I'm just questioning the forty-eight thousand and I want to know more of how we can justify that because people will come back and ask, why are we paying that much as opposed to thirty thousand or twenty-five thousand? And I still haven't seen that just yet, and I want to see that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Jacob.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm in favor of number three of the three, I'm not in favor of one and two. So as the motion stands, I'll be opposed. I like the RFP idea, and I would love to start down that road, but I'm not, I don't want to put the chamber on notice while we get our ducks in a row. We've been having this discussion over and over again, and we just keep having it, and it just keeps coming back. And I don't think this is the right course. Again, it's like I said, last time we talked about this, a couple meetings back, was you don't just, if something's been in place for a long time, I agree, if this was coming up today as the first time, we're looking at forty-eight thousand dollars, and oh my gosh, what is this for? It's not the first time, it's the first time this year, and it's like the sixth or seventh or eighth or twelfth time in a row. I don't know how many years in a row we've been doing it at that level. It probably would have slid by on consent if it wasn't being tried to raise to fifty for the, for the, our participation in the, in the one event. So I'm all in favor of looking at it, I'm all in favor of seeing what else is out there and see what the options are. Let's do that. But we're not, we're not starting from zero. If we're gonna change something that's been a longstanding relationship, we should do it gradually, and we should do it plenty of notice, and I mean plenty of notice as in months, not weeks. Let you know that, hey, in three months, in six months, or hey, when the contract's up again in July, we want to have, we want to have a thirty-six thousand dollar participation rate, if that's the number we pulled out of the air, and, you know, tell us what we get for that. Or something, if you're gonna change a longstanding relationship, you don't just cut somebody off at the knees, I just don't like that as just a matter of course in any relationship. Unless it's become dangerous or toxic for some reason, I just don't like doing it all at once. So my, my opinion is, I'm all for, for number three. I would gladly vote yes on number three in doing the RFP and seeing what else is out there and making a decision once we have proposals from other chambers and things. But I'm not in favor of the deadline and the other parts of the motion.
Councilmember Burton.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. So when I first go on the chamber, I'm sorry, on the council, there were several people who would come to me and say, what's important to you? And I says, economic development is. I heard other people saying, yeah, economic development's our number-one position. And I've heard that from several members of this council. And where do we go when we want to have economic development? We go talk to the Chamber of Commerce. We say, hey, we want to do economic development. And they have been very good to work with me and work with the city on creating more economic development here. So if we are really serious about economic development, we hired an economic development director, which was done by the last council, and then we've got another new economic development director we've hired with this council since the other one retired. We have some fantastic things we're on the verge of doing, I think dropping, stopping this at this time would not be good. So I agree with Councilmember McConaughey to the point that I am going to offer a substitute motion that we only do the RFP. Second.
Okay, we have a substitute motion of the RFP by Councilmember Burton and a second by Councilmember Jacob. And before we go to discussion of the council, Rob, did you have a chance to look at the agreement?
Yes, actually, Mr. Anderson found the contract before I did. It's a thirty-day notice under the renewed contract, which is month-to-month, which you approved beginning of the fiscal year. So the September thirtieth date will work if that's part of the motion.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Whitelock.
I, I believe that notice was given when we said that we were going month-to-month. I, I feel like that was a notice that we may not renew the contract, so I feel like more than, more than thirty days has been given. I don't feel like it's gonna, oh, today we're saying no, so.
Okay, Councilmember McConaughey.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I was considering calling point of order on this one, but instead I'll just speak against the substitute motion. The purposes of a substitute motion is primarily to help fix potentially unclear wording. It could be used to help improve a poorly worded motion or a resolution in order to help it pass. This substitute motion is sixty-six percent different than the initial motion, so it's not quite what a substitute motion was intended. I think this should stand on its own as a separate motion if the motion on the table, if the motion that was on the table were to fail. But having that procedurally, if we do have a substitute motion with a second, I would speak against the substitute. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other comments to the substitute motion? Seeing none, let's vote on the substitute motion.
Mayor Writing?
No.
Councilmember Whitelock?
No.
Mayor Protem Anderson?
No.
Councilmember Lamb?
No.
Councilmember McConaughey?
No.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
The vote fails two to five.
Okay, so now we go back to the original motion, the three items, can we restate that, Melanie?
Yep. Councilmember McConaughey moved to direct staff to provide notice to terminate the contract with the Chamber of Commerce effective September thirtieth. Also, West Jordan City continue as a member of the Chamber of Commerce, and then direct staff to prepare an RFP for chamber services for the city of West Jordan. It was seconded by Mayor Protem Anderson. Does that sound right, Chris?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And I'm gonna ask Councilmember McConaughey, do you have a membership number, a dollar amount of what the membership would be?
I don't.
So that some of the staff would work with the chamber?
Yeah.
Okay, Councilmember Lamb.
Just a comment on being a member, with the July, August, and now September cost, that's twelve thousand dollars, so I'm not sure what a regular membership costs, but that would seem a number that we've already paid, just to comment.
Okay, Councilmember Jacob.
I can appreciate that, it's significantly less than twelve thousand dollars, I think it's two, three, four, five, something like that. However, that would be under new contracts, we're paying under the existing contract, that's gonna terminate, I don't think. It'd be, it'd be nice if we could say, yeah, you should apply that, but they're under no obligation to apply that. If we want to continue as a, as a member, we should pay whatever the member rate is when we have that new contract in place, just as a, I think legally that puts us on better footing. However, I get what you're saying, but we've been paying for a service we've been getting under a contract that's already in place, so.
Thank you, and I haven't, I've not spoken, this is, this is very hard for me, and it's, I have chamber blood from a, a previous employment with the Chamber of Commerce. And it's, it's hard for me because I know this chamber very well, I knew the chamber I was in obviously very well, and I see this more as a, a fresh start in a relationship with the chamber. My desire has always been do something better than we've done in the past, and I could see this as, you know, we've, we've paid some funds under the existing contract, and there would be a new membership that we could talk to the chamber about and allow them to participate in the RFP of what services the city needs to move forward. And Asia, I want you to know that it is hard for me to be up here and have this dialogue. I have, I have a great understanding of what you do and what the chamber does, and I hope you appreciate that. So. Seeing no more comments, let's vote.
Councilmember Jacob?
No.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Burton?
No.
Mayor Protem Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitelock?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamb?
Yes.
Mayor Writing?
Yes.
The vote passes five to two in favor.
Thank you. Next item. Next item, discussion and possible action regarding approval for the City of West Jordan Events Committee participate with the Jordan River Commission for a cleanup of the trail in September, Councilmember Burton.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I brought this up at our last council meeting about the opportunity of the city participating with the Jordan River Commission in an event that they call Getting to the River Day, and I sent each of you, hopefully you got the tentative plans, if you like those, of the city participating in that event. Basically, it'll be cleaning up the trail, we will not be actually getting in to the river, we will be on the side of the river, on the West Jordan side, and clean up the trail. And if you have any questions or if you have not received, as per the sent to you, let me know, I could give you more descriptions, but otherwise, I would just like to authorize staff to proceed with that event.
If that's a motion, I would second.
Okay, that will be my motion then, thank you for your second.
All right, so we have a motion by Councilmember Burton, a second by Councilmember McConaughey. Is there any discussion to the motion?
Just like to have it repeated from the clerk for clarification.
Restate the motion, please.
Well, I'm earning my money tonight.
We all have.
Councilman, huh? Councilmember Burton moved to approve the tentative agenda that is scheduled for the Jordan River Commission for the cleanup of the trail scheduled in September, seconded by Councilmember McConaughey. Good enough? Okay.
Okay, Councilmember Jacob.
Just a question, what's our financial commitment, what are we committing to exactly?
The financial commitment is very minimal because we have volunteers who will be doing that and donations, so there'll be some staff time, and the staff is the financial commitment. Other than that, there is no other costs expended.
David Ricky?
It is not an item that is currently budgeted, but I think what I'm looking at is donuts, trash bags, and I'm not sure what vouchers sound, look like, but there would probably be two hundred dollars total.
And the vouchers will be, and we anticipate to have them donated, so we don't buy the vouchers, they're breakfast vouchers if we go that route, we're just looking at the options of that. And there'll be the cost of the dumpster, so we'll have a dumpster that'll need to be emptied, dropped off and emptied.
Maybe Mr. Naylor has a better opinion about, am I, is my two hundred dollars too low?
It is too low between staff time, we're gonna have on-call staff down there plus event staff, and then also the request for the three dumpsters, Public Works will have staff time involved in dropping them off and picking them up, so it would be significantly more than two hundred dollars.
And it is on Saturdays would be overtime.
Can I make a substitute motion since that seems to be the topic du jour? It's exactly what Councilmember Burton said with a not-too-exceed amount of... I'll say 4,000. So that's my substitute motion. No, can't do that one.
Council contingency, we pull up on council contingency.
We don't have that.
The council has a contingency amount of about $20,000. You've used at least $1,000 that I'm aware of, so we could take money from that account.
Well... Okay, so my substitute number's gonna be, it's the same. It's not to exceed 4,000 from council contingency. That's my substitute motion.
I'll second that.
Okay, any other discussion on the motion on the table?
I've got a quick comment.
Councilmember McConaughey.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I think I would oppose to it this way. I would prefer to see it worked into the current events budget that we have, if it can be covered that way. I worry about being down 25% of the council... We're only two months into the year. That leaves us with very little for the remaining 10 months of our fiscal year, and I would rather not deplete us 25% that quickly.
Okay, and who's Parks on Events? Their funds for that?
So I would say 4,000 is way more than what would be needed. When I say significantly more than 200, I'm talking, it would probably be less than 1,000, which is significantly more than 200. But I don't believe that we need $4,000, since your topic is 25% of your contingency budget. I think you could make a motion that would be not to exceed $1,000, and I believe staff would be able to do it for under that.
Okay, so I'm gonna withdraw my substitute motion if you would like to substitute.
Withdraw. Let me amend my motion then. Okay, so my motion is now for the council to approve the city to participate in the Get in the River event in September with a not-to-exceed of $2,500 taken from the council contingency. And if there's, from last year's council contingency, that lets slip extra money. Okay, not that part. It'll be vicious. I can't do that.
So what fund, the council contingency fund?
The Parks Fund, wasn't it?
The events, I think, is where we're looking.
If you're looking at events, I'd have to pull the report. I know overtime in events currently is overspent over 200% in what was budgeted for overtime due to the 4th of July celebration unfunded overtime for the parade route and for the float. And so currently, I'm over 200% spent in overtime. So it would just go into the deficit even more if you put that overtime into our current events overtime budget.
Mayor, did you have your hand up?
I did. This, to me, ranks up there with that $150,000 that was in the budget for unknown facilities projects. This is an unknown events project. Is there any way the events staff can look ahead to see what might be coming down the pike? I think this is the river, it's an annual event that comes along. If we wanted to participate in that, we should have made sure that it was in our budget this year. I'm just concerned that we're going down a path that we rejected before on other things. And I agree with Councilmember McConaughey that completing the council contingency is not really the wisest thing to do. I think this is a very worthwhile project. You know, I would be willing to go $1,000 out of the council contingency, but I can't go 2,500, so I would, I'd be opposed to that.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Councilmember McConaughey.
Thank you. I would be in favor of a motion for participation if it can be paid for out of current budgets. As we talked about funding everything, including the staff time, out of the council contingency, I don't know how frequent, how frequently we've had, like, inter-fund transfer back to the council contingency fund to cover overtime and unanticipated staff time. Most of the department overtime budget for things like this, and if it's for those other departments to cover with the budgets that they have, then fantastic. Would not necessarily be a need to have events pay the other department a certain amount to cover the staffing that's already been covered or anticipated, kind of like the, with the unanticipated, the funding set aside for unanticipated items. I, it's doing the inter-department transfer to cover the weight or for the employees when we already have the overtime budgets. So I would be supportive and proud that participate, found within current budgets, and leave it at that, so staff can identify what's available.
Thank you, Councilmember McConaughey. Councilmember Whitelock.
I'm a little confused why the motion went to 2,500 when staff is telling us 1,000, and I'm with Mayor Writing. I could support 1,000 out of the council contingency fund, and this is why. I feel like this isn't something that was agreed upon before, so the council is saying, yeah, Councilmember Burton, we want to participate. So therefore, it seems equitable to me that it comes out of our funds, and I could support 1,000, but not 2,500.
Oh, Councilmember Jacob.
Thank you. I was just confused, because according to what I was reading, and I wasn't here on the 8th, I was watching online as much, I was here on the 8th. It was in July that I wasn't here. But the, the report that I read is I thought we were voting on next year, on 2019. That's what it looked like on the budget. It said, Councilmember McConaughey indicated not having any objection to the trail cleanup, however, felt it would be important for the council to approve Get Into the River event for 2019. And so I thought that's what was being brought back. So I'm a little confused. If we're voting for 2018, I think it's a little short notice. I kind of agree, though, with the sentiment that's been up here. Probably should have been green-cheated. We need an unforeseen minor projects for the Parks Department, and maybe every department needs one of those. But, yeah, because this is a council person bringing it forward at this point in time, I kind of see the justification for council contingency as a last-minute kind of a thing. Still not sure exactly what we're doing there, but, okay.
Councilmember Burton.
I thought we had discussed it last week to approve this part two, until I got with staff, and he said I had to bring it back, so that's why it's here. And so that does make sense, since there are some expenditures included. In my mind, I thought, oh, we could just do this, but then he started thinking of dumpsters and staff. That's where the costs come in, even though we have volunteers to help reduce those costs. So, and I don't anticipate $2,500. I don't anticipate we'll spend $1,000. Those are just caps. I think the numbers will be less. So when I said 4,000 to 25,000, I'm sorry, 4,000 to 2,500, I never thought we'd even get close to that. But I don't want to put us in a position that we have to come back and discuss this again, because it's already taken longer than it should. So I'm happy to amend my motion a third time to make it not to exceed $1,000.
I will second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Burton and a second by Councilmember Whitelock. Melanie, will you restate it, so we all know what we're voting on? Thank you.
Council, excuse me. Councilmember Burton moved to approve the city's participation with the Jordan River Commission Get Into the River event for the cleanup of the trail in September in an amount not to exceed $1,000, taken from the council contingency fund, seconded by Councilmember Whitelock.
Thank you, and I'll be in support of this. I think the Jordan River Parkway is a great asset to our city, and budget amount works, and where it's sourced from works, and so I'll be fully in support. Seeing no more comments, let's vote.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Mayor Writing?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Maybe. Okay, yes.
Maybe doesn't work. Councilmember McConaughey? Are you there? He's not there. He's gone. Councilmember Whitelock?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamb?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Anderson?
Yes.
The vote passes six in favor.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for your patience. And with all the fun we've had, we have some remarks, and you said Councilmember McConaughey is not with us? Okay. He had some, he had some remarks, so we'll, we'll see if anybody has some remarks here. Councilmember Lamb?
I don't know if they're remarks, more, it's probably more of a question concerning the chamber, and I'll direct this towards David Bricky or Rob Wall. So last, last council meeting, I had made a motion to put off the decision for the chamber and make a decision on the 22nd, I believe it is, the second meeting in September. Is that something that we need to amend, now that we made this change tonight, or does that just stay on the table until that comes?
I guess it will depend on how quickly we can get something together. The staff can get something together and bring it back to you. You could leave it on for the 22nd, and then if we're not ready, we could postpone it.
Are you meaning September 26th? Today's the 22nd. The second meeting.
The second meeting in September.
September 26th.
I made the motion to make a decision then, but do I need to make, do we need to make an amendment to the motion now, or just hold for now?
I would say probably change it, because I'm, without knowing if we're going to be, the staff will be able to get back with you with what you've asked by then, if there's nothing to be decided because of the decision tonight.
Because I don't think we'll have a decision by then, so the, my question would be, do we need to make that decision on the dais, or is it something we can just take off without having?
The council directed it to be rescheduled, so I would change it tonight from the dais. You can do it by motion.
Well, let's just leave it there for now. As we get closer, we'll see if we can pull it next, next meeting. Thank you.
Councilmember Whitelock.
I just have some thoughts regarding the gentleman that came with his son today. I don't know how many of you know, but my daughter was hit on 90th and Bangator, and the driver left, and we encountered several metacopials due to that. And I know that 27 and 78 is a rough corner, and I know that it's going to get worse next year when the student body of West Jordan High School goes up. So a couple of thoughts that, I know that it's a state road, but I wondered if we would be allowed to put orange flags there, perhaps, like they do in Salt Lake? See if that worked, or if we could put any of the flashing lights. Can we do anything? Is there, and David Murphy's gone now, but if there's something that we could do in the meantime before we can get the state to do something, because I've kind of found that working with UDOT can be tricky. So, just if we can do anything, because that guy's son got hit, had to dive out of the way of a car. And teenage drivers are terrific. That's why their insurance is high. So that's all. I just, I hope that we can do something and not just say, well, that's a UDOT road.
Joel, that is a, that's a city road, 78, that section?
No, when we looked at it more, and we talked to David Murphy once he got here, that section is the state's portion. The, once you cross Bangator, the section of 78 that goes down and then bends down to the New Bingham Highway, all that is city. So we own a portion of 78, but not that portion. I talked to Brian after I talked to the gentleman before the meeting and after he spoke at the meeting. We are going to call UDOT. We are going to address it with UDOT. As far as putting up lights or anything on a UDOT road, we're not allowed to do any of that type of activity.
But we could do something on 27th, right?
Yes, we could on 27th on...
And what if they just happen to face 78 and they're on 27?
There's approach.
Think outside of the box.
I think that our best, I think our best angle is to get with UDOT and push the issue with UDOT and all of us. I know that Representative Ivory talked to the gentleman before he left. Representative Ivory took, gave him his card, and he said to send him an email describing what had happened, and he would address it from that end as well. So I think between myself, Brian, Representative Ivory, and the gentleman, all calling and going forward with UDOT, we're gonna try and put a lot of pressure on them to do something. Something needs to change. He made the statement that the lights weren't functioning properly, and I don't, where it's a UDOT road, I don't know anything about if that's accurate or not, so we're gonna follow up on that. We talked to the chief tonight as well. He is gonna provide extra patrol there in the mornings. You know, the schools stagger their start times with the smaller schools, the primary schools versus secondary schools, and so we're gonna provide more officers and see if we can provide a safer environment through what we can provide.
Okay, and if you need, need to call my friend, let me know.
The more calls, the better in situations like this.
Thank you, Mayor. Did you have any remarks you wanted to make?
Not tonight. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you, Mayor.
Just one quick one. I want to tell Melanie thank you for tonight and all the great work that she's done, and she earns her pay every week.
Thanks, Councilmember. I love to help you guys out.
All right, last item on the agenda is go into a closed session, so I'll move to go into a closed session for the discussion of the character of professional competence or physical or mental health of an individual. Strategy session to discuss pending or reasonably imminent litigation, and strategy session to discuss the purchase, exchange, or lease of real property, including any form of water rights or water shares. Councilmember Burton?
And adjourn from there.
And adjourn from there. Councilmember Burton?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Seeing no comment from the council, Melanie, let's vote.
Mayor Protem Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Mayor Writing?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamb?
Yes.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitelock?
Yes.
Vote passes six in favor.
Thank you, everyone. Have a great night.
Good night, everyone.
Thanks, Mayor.